Good morning, everyone online. Talk amongst yourselves. Can somebody just, uh, how long? Anybody that's joined virtually?
Yes, we can hear you, Stacy.
All right, good morning. I would like to call this meeting to order. It is April 24th and it is our budget retreat, day one. I would like to have, no, I need to do the, okay. Notice is hereby given to the members of the city council and to the general public that at this budget retreat, the city council may vote to go into executive session. This will not be open to the public for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. May I get roll call, please? Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet, here. Councilmember Asland?
Yep.
Let's member Garcia?
Present.
Let's member House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews, here. Councilmember Spence?
Yeah.
Councilmember Garcia, can you lead us in the pledge?
I'd be honored to. Able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry.
Mission of the city of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance quality of life for all.
Aslan, acknowledgement.
That city council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. Lands still inhabited by native descendants, order mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
It looks like we have city manager kicking us off.
Morning, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes. You're all doing great. Thank you for being here. Well, housekeeping matters. Scott and team, thank you for hosting this event. We appreciate it as always. It works well for these retreats. All of staff and council, thank you for, once again, participating in a budget retreat. This is one of many this year, but I think we're, we're on the final stretch. There's a little bit of work to do yet, a lot. This will culminate in, we in origin before council, probably in June, right? And we'll get this thing approved prior to the council recess. Isn't it funny to be talking about council recess? Seems like time just flies by. We started this process months ago. There have been several retreats and a lot of work along the way. I want to thank the budget team, uh, who's doing a lot of, uh, kind of scenes work. I want to thank the, um, finance team and specifically, um, budget team within that finance team. Uh, it's a small team, but they work very hard. We'll be hearing from them throughout the day. I'll be turning it over to Heidi here in just a second, but a lot of lift going into this, uh, budget process and we greatly appreciate the efforts. This retreat will not be facilitated, so we expect all of you to be on your best behavior to the extent possible. Uh, we like, uh, the facilitation, but, uh, there are times, uh, especially as we progress where it really isn't, uh, as needed. Uh, so we're going to wing it today, but that said, um, I know Heidi and the team, John and others have been really busy on working on this agenda, so even though we are without a professional facilitator, I want to assure you that we have our act together. They have their act together and, and we look forward to, to this retreat. As always, um, these retreats are a little bit more informal and, uh, structured to be that way. Uh, so we can take questions or comments on the fly. Raise your hand or, uh, interrupt as, as chief, we'll have the mayor here in a little bit. But we, we have a little less formality in these retreats and, um, that's a good thing. So, uh, we want it to be engaging. We want to hear your thoughts and comments. We respectfully ask that for those of you on the one table here, if you do want to speak, we want to hear from you, but you have to come up close so we can get you on the microphone up here. Uh, we are streaming, uh, Stacy, so, uh, this is like the podium up here. Just come on up and be in proximity to this microphone. Uh, and what else do I need to cover? Heidi, are we good? Can I turn it over to you? All right, Heidi Derryberry this morning.
Morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Heidi Derryberry, the city's assistant finance director. It's Greg. Oh. I am here this morning, um, first of all, to just briefly go over what our agenda we are going to be having for the next few days includes. Um, so I will be kicking it off this morning with the overview. And then we have, um, a brief revenue update, just of changes of any revenue outlooks that we've seen since we saw you um, last in February. Um, and then we're going to have, um, a discussion on the investing in employees as well as a short presentation by EAC. Um, then we are going to talk about new budget appropriations, capital improvement program, and then our key community priorities. So that's all the good stuff we have in today's agenda. Tomorrow, uh, we will have opening an overview. Um, we should wrap up key community priorities today, actually, but if needed, we'll have time for those tomorrow. And then tomorrow, we're going to really talk about some financial planning for future consideration items. And then, um, turn it over to council for any parking lots, um, discussions on anything that comes up for ads, deletes, um, or anything else. So we have quite a bit of time tomorrow, um, reserved for council discussion. So just briefly, uh, Greg kind of stole a little of my thunder of, I'm always following Greg and he likes to steal my thunder. So this is just our timeline. So as Greg mentioned, we've been, this is actually our fourth retreat this year for this budget. Um, so we started in January. We saw you again in February and March, um, for the capital. And then today, we're here April. So we are here today to present the city manager's recommended budget. Um, and then, as Greg mentioned, June is when you, we will be before you again, um, for formal adoption for tentative and final. I wanted to talk just a minute about the budget approach, um, that the budget team took this year. Every year, the budget team meets, um, very early, August, September, October, and actually starts talking about the next year's budget. It seemed extremely early, but we have, as you know, a lot to do. So when the team met this last year, we really talked about what's our theme going to be for the 26th budget? So the overarching theme was building our capacity. We really wanted to focus on the building blocks of our organization and align the needs of the community with the resources that we have available. So that's kind of the overarching theme we had. Um, we identified after conversations with our divisions, we identified a number of needs, including staffing and vacancies, aging infrastructure, fleet, technology, and just ongoing maintenance. So those are a few of the items that we really focused on as a budget team. This budget approach, these were our key items that we focused on. We talked a lot about compensation and benefits, which you will hear about shortly, and moved towards a lot of advancement in that. Um, we always focus on the key community priorities and objectives that council and the community have established. We talked a lot about infrastructure needs and we will see a lot of advancement in that, um, in the recommended budget that you have as well. And as always, we continue our focus on our carbon neutrality plan in our house. And you will hear from both of them today as well. Um, talking about color of money, one final time for this year, um, very briefly, just remembering, we do have our color of money. Um, we do have to remember that we have special revenue funds, enterprise funds, debt service funds, capital project funds, and general funds, and they all have different, um, resources and availabilities and what we can use them. That is my brief overview introduction for the day, and I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Rick Tatter.
Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Rick Tatter, Management Service Director. Good to see you today. Um, I'm going to give you just a brief update, mainly focused around a general fund and, uh, revenues, uh, since we met in February. I'll give you a couple of highlights related to that. Make sure I'm on the right slide. So, a few things to explain is when we came to you in February, this was based on revenues posted through December. Uh, we didn't have the updated January returns at the time. Um, and then also timing is, January is December's tax return, so cities, uh, businesses collect in December, they're reporting January. So understanding the timing of when the revenues are coming in and what they really represent is, is, it's kind of important to understand, the retail sectors and construction and so forth. So I just wanted to bring, uh, attention to the general fund sales tax categories as one of the, uh, areas we saw change, uh, since our February retreat. And here you can see it has actually been a little bit downward in our projection from where we were in February. Uh, what we saw is, uh, some declines in January's revenues related to retail and marketplace. Uh, December's kind of that holiday season, but we were kind of surprised that those did decline a little bit year over year, uh, in that, uh, timeframe. Uh, in February, they, they stabilized, it increased a little bit, and I just looked at, um, March's revenues and they're good. They're a little bit over year over year, uh, this year. So we, but we did bring those projections down in that category. Another category, um, that we're watching is our hotel, uh, occupancies and revenues in that area. Uh, we had a very good summer, but we saw some year-over-year declines, uh, over the last several months. And we're just monitoring that. We did bring down our projections in those areas, uh, to, to sure we can meet those for our budget considerations. Um, about a 2% down year over year. Does winter weather have an effect? Probably. Uh, not much snow, not much winter activity in Flagstaff. Uh, but we'll keep watching that and, uh, looking at that going forward. On a positive note, construction contracting, it had a good summer of construction contracting and, and sales tax collection related to that. Uh, it did slow down in the last couple of months, uh, but it, it's winter time. Um, year over year, still moderately close. But we're looking at good projection in this area and, uh, for our, uh, tax revenues available, uh, for next year. Yes?
Is this comparing to statewide, what they're seeing?
We'll, we'll take the next slide.
Awesome.
Um, I saw last year's down. Are we, and I, we got some number of permits issued year-to-date. It's like it's kind of low still. Is that a concern at this point? Because that'll come into play in the, I don't know if it'll come into play this fiscal year because they're just permits and, um, I don't know when they're going to start building that.
Um, yes, they were trending down when we were talking about this a little bit in February, but, um, as you remember, we, we always, we don't always take that number and project farther. We reset and we say, okay, here's a moderate level, about $2 million a year versus $3 million. And we take that as our baseline going forward and we've watched that category for a change. So I think as far as budgeting purposes, we're at a spot. Will that have an impact in other areas as far as construction maybe slowing down? Yeah, it could have some impacts later, but budgeting wise, we're, we're down at that level.
Thank you.
Very well. Um, but just generally overall, uh, we're trending at about 2.5% growth in our general fund sales tax. While you see some declines in these numbers, uh, we still are projecting above, uh, what prior year actuals were. When we adopted the budget last April, we were projecting about a, a 2%, or 3% increase. So we're just slightly below where we were projecting almost a year ago, uh, with our revenue projections. So we're, we're close, but we're monitoring. We'll be watching these revenues month after month as we, as we always do. Um, but leads to diversity in revenues. You know, this is just a third of our main general fund revenues, but we have a diverse revenue base that we, we have ability to see things grow, uh, things decline, and, uh, manage our resources on an annual basis. So talking about state side of things, uh, here you'll see where the state shared revenues are, um, in our projections. Uh, in February, uh, we brought you projections based on our December returns. Um, so here we're actually seeing some positive. I was a little, probably a little more conservative with the state side of, of resources and revenues and taxes from what I was hearing. But as we went into January and we saw February's return to your, two months, more months of returns, we're like, all right, they're doing very well as far as the state, what they're collecting as a statewide tax collection. So we did, uh, actually, we were able to actually increase these estimates for resources for next budget year and this year. Um, the first six months, we, we saw a little bit of decline, about a 1, 1.5% decline, but it has bounced back and we are projecting a, a year-over-year gain in similar tax revenues. Uh, because of the, uh, January, February postings and March posting I looked at this week also, and they're still maintaining good growth. Auto Lou, which is our vehicle registration taxes, uh, that we get from the state, uh, through shared revenues, uh, have been very strong year-over-year. Uh, we've seen this category growing year and part of this cost of vehicles and registrations have impacts here. Through the first six months, we were growing pretty well, but I continue to see, uh, increase in tax revenues for the city on our side. So our projected growth year-over-year is looking at about 5% versus a 3%. So we've got gives and takes within our general fund revenues. One thing we'll be watching on this one is, is will there be more car sales as tariffs change? There've been talks about, okay, people are going to buy cars real quick, you know, before tariffs come in and maybe prices change. So it could be a, a one-time swing in these next few months of revenues, but will it be long-term, uh, stable? That's yet to be seen for the city, for, uh, the state. Um, so that's on shared revenue. I'll talk a little more state coming up on the next slide too. So here's just kind of a general recap and thoughts, uh, as, as we, uh, wrap up our revenue discussion. Um, sales taxes slightly lower than we projected last year. Uh, but we're going to maintain the, the growth expectations about, uh, 3% for next year. Uh, we're comfortable with that number. Some categories we're, we're bringing down, uh, maybe to 1%, like hotel motels. Uh, we're like, let's bring that one down a little bit. Uh, but we feel these are, are very good projections. If recession or something changes, we've got tools to be flexible in our, in our resources and allocation. So we're going to keep monitoring these monthly as we've always been doing. And if we see some, um, major changes, we will definitely have some conversations about that over the next several months. State share revenue, sales tax, um, finance advisory committee had a presentation to, um, the senate or the state legislator last week. Your thoughts and their projects are aligning kind of where I was with my projections. Uh, they are seeing some, some growth, but they did actually pull theirs back down a little bit, uh, which really aligns where I was previous to having that conversation with the legislators. So they're seeing some short-term concerns, uh, that adjusted their estimates, uh, but they, they feel, feel pretty good about projections in the out years, uh, going forward. So, uh, we're pretty aligned there with, with state shared revenues. Uh, just to note that these projections I, that we're sharing with you were part of our budget process. We'd look at these every month and, and I brought this to the budget team and explained to them where we're seeing this growth. And we utilize that in our resources for what we decided for our city manager budget this year. Uh, so these have been committed already. There is one adjustment we made with our recession planning in our general fund. I just want to explain that a little bit. In our, our planning and our, our development of fee projections in our general fund, we always understand that recessions are cyclical. They, they happen. They're going to come and go. And we've got a couple of tools that work with that through the projection process as well as a recession planning document. So in my projections, I generally, about every seven or so years, put about a 3% decline in revenues and then go flat, just to make sure we're not committing ongoing resources to, uh, revenues that may not be there. This year, working with the budget team, we talked about that approach and we were working on the needs to commit to compensation considerations in our organization. And we were trying to think, oh, how do we manage this a little differently? And so we took the consideration of, instead of doing a 3% decline, let's just keep it flat, uh, for several years. And how does that impact the resources we have available to commit this year, uh, toward our compensation needs? And it was a very important change we made, but we didn't make it just to make money. We did it because it was important for our organization, for our staff, as well as we know we've got a great recession plan in place. We know we can lean on that and, uh, allow that to be the tool that helps us through, uh, cyclical downturns. And we'll look at that and re-manage it over time, but I, I think it was a good choice that, that we as a team made, uh, together. Uncertainty. Yeah, we hear this a lot this year from economists and, uh, presentations I, I hear and what I hear on the TV panels and so forth. Uncertainty is a, a very key word we're having. Uh, we all seen the changes over the last several months with the new administration of what they're doing as far as, um, cutting costs or cutting jobs, uh, tariffs and, and everything. So there's a lot of uncertainty and each week changes. So it's really hard to really peg some, some key, uh, projections off of what changes day-to-day, week-to-week. So, um, the state, uh, finance advisor committee talked about this, you know, it's, it's kind of like, well, some of this is a wait-and-see because it's an old layout eventually of where we get. But it has impacts on, uh, consumer confidence, consumer spending, and that's probably where we're seeing the retail numbers. And that's probably where we're seeing the retail numbers not hitting our projections as they have been. As consumers are uncertain, they may want to like save money or not use that credit card as much. So that could have some impacts that we see going forward. And that's just one of those, those impacts of uncertainties that, that we do see as in our projections and consider revenues. One thing to note is potential changes in federal and state income taxes. This has been a part of conversations taxing on social security, taxing on tips over the last presidential election as well as currently having conversations even at the state level. We're aware of these. Nothing's in place yet, but it's, it's a lot of talk and, and we will have a consideration of how those impact us in our Flagstaff area. One thing is the state of Arizona does not tax social security. So it's great. We're not going to be hit if they make a federal change to social security taxes. We as a, as a state are not impacted in our income taxes. But on the tips, we mentioned this in the February retreat, there could be a financial impact if they do what shared income tax as a state. I looked at the impact of that and that is about 70,000 a year that we could see as an impact. So we'll monitor that, see how that's adopted, if it's changed. It may be waiting to see what the federal does and see if we adopt it. It's just uncertain. It's a word we use a lot. So we're aware of it. We know there could be impacts from it, but we'll be ready to adjust as needed. Tariffs, we hear this word almost every day. It's a difficult conversation. It, this is one of those things that's really providing a lot of uncertainty through our projections, our, our businesses, our companies, the ability to spend. Are there going to be impacts? Yes, but it's been a moving target and it's really hard to rely on what's going to happen at this point. So that's where you see us just maintaining our projections in our estimates, but we're aware of these things. As far as a state of Arizona, we are I won't say only, we are the 33rd highest import impacted state. So we're not like the highest impact from these tariffs, but yes, we're going to be impacted. State, I think every state will. And we are the 22nd highest in export going out of the state, out of the country from the state of Arizona. So those are the balances you, you gotta kind of look at. How does those balance out and where those trades are that they do send overseas or bring in? One of the economists at the finance advisory committee meeting talked about what we export and what we export is primarily the computer equipment, technology stuff. And while it may not go overseas, it's something that we can redistribute throughout the states. So he made it, he made it sound like it may not be as impacted from our export concerns, but more from the import concerns and the cost of those coming into our community. They also mentioned the implant, impact of inflation. People, you know, maybe want to buy cars now instead of waiting for tariffs and inflation to hit or goods and so forth. So we'll may see some swings in those types of transactions and purchases. But this summer is, we'll learn a lot this summer as, as we get through a lot of this federal considerations. We'll learn a lot this summer and we'll adjust and we'll be back talking about those. Recession, question mark. No, I don't, I don't think we're quite there yet. But we're always watching. We're going to be prepared if something happens. There's definitely missed signals out in the economy that doesn't really point fully toward a recession, but there are indicators that could push us that way. So I'm not, I'm not prepared as my opinion to say, yes, we're in recession. We need to start thinking about our revenues, our impacts. But we are keeping an eye on it. We do expect a little bit of slowdown, leveling off possibly. We'll be here to manage it and, and watch it and come back to council if there's major concerns that impact the city of Flagstaff. Those are my comments on my revenue updates. Any questions? And we're not looking for any more donations to help our revenues, so.
I have a comment. Rick, I just wanted to thank you for, as you always do, just anticipating and planning and looking into the future as best we can. We don't have a crystal ball, but I was at a meeting yesterday with the hospital and the CEO mentioned that with the uncertainty of Medicaid, many of his counterparts down in the Valley stuff are not planning. They're just kind of, well, if it happens, it happens. And you know, that was so scary to hear, you know, and the hospital was saying that they, you know, they've got a plan and they will never stop serving neighbors up here regardless of the situation or not. But so it's, it's interesting how major companies, whether they're hospitals or municipalities, you know, it's really refreshing and reassuring to know that we are ones that are anticipating, planning and preparing for any uncertainties. I just want to thank you for that.
I appreciate it. And this, it's a team effort.
Sure.
Say that, you know, it's a budget team. It's, it's the staff, the whole organization that will come.
Nice. Keeps us out of trouble.
Yes. In the newspaper. All right. Well, thank you very much. Besting employees, Sarah is doing. Sarah Shorn from HR.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here to talk about one of my favorite topics, investing in our people. So thank you, mayor, vice mayor, council and team today. I also want to give a quick thank you to our finance team, budget team, EAC, class and comp team, human resources. There's been an incredible amount of work put into the information that I'm going to be sharing with you today. So first, just a few refreshers. Vacancy rate as of today, we're at 12%. So come down a little bit from that January number that we shared a few months ago. Did want to show you kind of our trend. Usually follow that number more on an annual want to see it over time, but we have been doing a good job of it's just and where we're progressing. Pretty much a full-time employment, not including temporary and council members is 900 So that is a full-time equipped employees, part-time for us to be able to come up with that budgeted number. And then our turnover rate, that's something that we also tracked for a longer period of time from January to November of last year was 12.7. Job postings as of Friday will be at 22 again, and we're currently working with just over 50 requisitions as of Friday as well. So we've got a good maintenance of both opening positions and filling positions as a recruitment team. Our time to fill is averaging 77 days, but we've had a very good trend line for this entire quarter going down to where we were at 57.4 in March and about 46-ish so far this April. So we do find that those trends change throughout the year due to a number of different factors. Vacations that can happen, that can extend things out. And also important to remember when you're looking at those job postings, there could be multiple people behind those. So we've got one that's lifeguards, about 10 lifeguards and just one of those postings. 15 actually, 15 lifeguards and 10 summer ramp. Yes, I was going to say. So we've got, we've got a lot of action going on right now in recruitment. Including the fact that applications are up too.
Just a question in the last month or two, have you seen any uptick of fired federal employees
Yes.
applying to the city?
Yes, uptick in both federal coming through as applications, both ones that have lost positions, but also ones that are planning ahead. So we've definitely seen an uptick in that. And I'm also getting a lot of feedback from our hiring managers that they're interviewing them as well. Not all of them make it to best fit for positions, but there's an effort there. We've also done some outreach because the media has been going out and, and conversations with people in the community as well. And we're taking those names and running them back through our applications to see if we can, we can find them and make reach out.
Thanks, Sarah. Can you back up one slide? As we look at this trend line, and it's very positive when you look at today's numbers, but it wasn't that long ago, it seems, when we were all having quite serious discussions about 17% vacancy in, in some divisions, we were higher than that, right? But now that we have the benefit of hindsight here, do we attribute the big spike 2021 to the aftermath of COVID? Kind of a slow return of the workforce?
Absolutely. So COVID is definitely part of it because our budgeted FTE stayed pretty much the same slash has increased over that period of time. Where a lot of other places or organizations may have been more reactionary and they have reduced that. And so that's where the vacancy numbers can sometimes be a little bit misleading because you don't have positions available, then that's, that's a lower vacancy number. So where our state, our state consistent. Another large factor truly was the fact that we had not fully implemented our market-based pay. We had started to have communications with city employees on this is what we're planning on doing. This is the study that we've done with Evergreen recommendations, but not fully implemented. And so sometimes that can be challenging when you're hearing you're going to have to wait in addition to the pressures of economically at that time.
It was interesting that part of our vacancies are our lifeguards. And that, you know, turned out alive for me because I hosted a Cub Scout group the end of last year and we did a simulation of a council meeting. And their big number one priority was we need more lifeguards because it's impacting our creation. So it was, that was their number one important thing. And so to hear that we still have such a vacancy, even though it may not seem important to us as, as important to us here, it's really impacting our youth and their ability to get out there and enjoy our
Thank you for mentioning that, council member. One of the things that we have been able to do at the city, and I know Rebecca's proud of this as well, is we can now certify lifeguards. So we didn't have the ability or capacity to be able to do that before. So all of our applicants had to be certified in order to progress through the process. They now no longer have to do that. We'll actually train them. We'll get them CPR and first work and everything to be able to do it.
Good news. I'll, I'll pass that on to the Cub Scouts.
Yes. So, you know, you can send, send them our way, have them come for some summer, summer training with our pros department. Be able to get that lifeguard training and certification. But yeah, we, we've been doing a huge push with the pros team on recruitment for those part-time, both summer camp and lifeguard positions. And I think that we're seeing a lot of should have a good summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, I kind of went through it really quickly, but our applications are up pretty significantly. I was really excited about this number at the end of 2024, but now remember that those application numbers are being influenced by other economic activity and information that's increasing that overall as well. So it's not just city as an attractor as an employer, but also just needs within the community.
Going back to your previous comment, I'd like to think that the rise in applications and it's significant. 30% in 2024. I mean, that's like really good news. I have to think that that is in part because of our market adjustments and being a more competitive employer.
Absolutely. There was almost a three-pronged approach that we did last year. One of those was being more transparent on our pay. And not only more transparent on our pay, not only posting the full range, but posting the budgeted range, which helped us and our candidates get more in alignment on where we needed to be. So something that we'll be looking forward to sharing the future will be our decline rate. In the summer, it was at 30%, which is sort of unacceptable. We've gone through a lot of work to talk with the candidates and bring them to interview, sit with the hiring manager, make an offer and then, you know, for us to break down at that point of the pay rate, just because it wasn't in alignment with expectations was a problem. We have since brought those expectations upfront in the process and have had significant results from that, just being able to break down. There we are. This is our total rewards, pay and benefits, our whole package and really making sure that it's a good fit for both sides beginning as opposed to at the end of that recruitment process. So that was one part. We did a lot more recent outreach as well. And then the third prong, which I think was a major prong, was absolutely making those market adjustments. So I know I've had conversations with our water services department recently. Just the change from last year to this year in that the offices are filled, the cubicles are filled. You know, we are getting to points where we're fully staffed and then, you know, maybe there's one resignation and we're just working to fill that one opening. So being able to hear that there's progress there is really good for this. These are our recommendations on the positions to be approved in the general. We do have an IT manager one time for project-based. We're trying to enhance a lot of our technology across nonparticulate organizations. We're looking for that position to help with that. Assistant City Attorney for dispatch. Also one time on a special project. Let's ask for anybody that's online. We Ice is going to quarantine.
That what the IT manager will be dealing with?
Happy, happy to have them step in for that. And then fire captain for dispatch, that's also one time. Working with the police department on a special CAD project. So it's only one time until we can better understand the needs and how that position is going to fit in. And then also a mechanic too for public works, additional mechanic. And that one, by the way, is a hard-to-fill position. If you've got any mechanic fill set or know anybody who's interested, city has roles available and that pay is up to date. We have market adjusted for mechanics. And these are our recommendations for positions that will be approved. Of the positions that were approved for library are temporary. Forest Lakes being one time. Didn't have the ongoing capacity for yet to be able to run it longer than one time.
On the library. So Ran Canyon Forest Lakes, that's in the county. So is this a shared cost with the county?
Sir, ours, aren't they? You're able to speak to.
I was asking if these two positions for library, is that a shared cost with the county since they're not in the city limits?
Definitely. It's actually paid through the county. We just have to go through the regular cycle with the city. We treat all, anything we do with the library the same as we treat any of the other processes. So we bring it through the budget team. We'll also go and do it for the county in May. Thank you.
I have a question on that topic. Since we kind of manage the funds, so to speak, for the situation, we also get kind of paid for that as well.
Forgot to introduce myself. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Heidi Hansen, Econ Op, Vitality Director. A good question, council member.
A good question, uh, Councilmember Garcia. Uh, there is, there is a relationship with uh, their budget and our budget and um, would say that Brandy Suda is more suited to answer all those things, but we definitely take care of that. I'm gonna let Brandy answer that question because
She knows everything.
She's had to really dive in on that, so.
Sorry, Brandy.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Brandy Suda, the city's finance director. Can you repeat your question, Garcia?
I was just curious uh, how we get paid for managing the fund, county fund for
So we have an IGA with the county, and there is a formula that was developed on how much each library gets. So um, twice a year, the county sends us a check to, after they've collected the property taxes for each half of the year. Um, and then that money is allocated to each of the different libraries. We also do receive um, a small amount to help support and through the administration of the library since we're, we, since Linda. Um, and Heidi oversee all of those libraries.
Thanks, Brandy. Thanks, Heidi.
Then uh, in Water Services, we are additionally adding a Water Services Supervisor and a Water Resources Specialist. And then for Sustainability and Administrative Specialist Temp and a Community Services Coordinator. For reclassifications, it's recommended that we take another look at these twelve positions um, in the next year, just to ensure that we've got them classified correctly. Uh, there are nine positions in the general fund, one in Water Services that will be taken into looking at, and then two in Sustainable.
Question. You've told us on these last two excuse me, the last two slides about uh, a small number of increased positions. Has there been, has there been any corresponding um, decreases in the number of employees that divisions uh, felt they could give up in this next budget year?
Question, none, none.
So we're going from nine hundred, roughly nine hundred and five FTEs to maybe nine hundred and nine?
Yeah, nine, nine to nine eleven. For next year.
Thank you.
So um, these are the these are the recommendations from the budget team. I was surprised not to see a, a recommendation for housing that not requested.
You got some background on that, Heidi?
Housing is doing some changes. I think their plan was mid-year.
I think this is a perfect, can I talk about this?
Yes.
This is a face.
Thank you.
Uh, so Mayor and Council, Joanne Keen, Deputy City Manager. Um, I wanted to find a good opportunity to talk about this today, and I think this is a perfect time. Um, so with the um, departure of Dan Folk as our Community Development Director, um, City Manager's Office, we had a, a good conversation about um, looking at this as a strategic opportunity to to make some changes and organizational changes. And um, the idea is to uh, change Community Development to Planning and Development Services, have Building Safety and Code and Real Estate and Planning report to that new director, recruit for that new director, and then move Housing um, as a report into the City Manager's Office. Um, in six months, do a um, create a division for Housing, because as we all know, Housing is one of our top priorities, and it just fits with the priorities of the organization. And at that time, looking at some opportunities for reorg and what positions may be needed at that time. Um, the budget team had a good discussion about it last week. Um, and I think the first step is to do the recruitment for the new director and then move Housing and then kind of assess um, the needs. Um, you know, I do think having Housing report into our office, it will you know, just there, there are less layers. So when it comes to legal procurement and all of the things that um, you know, we, we do have a lot of processes at the city. Um, so I think it's a great question and just know that we're thinking about it and will likely be moved forward um, probably in the next few months.
Oh, um, and that's usually to my ears, it's a long time coming, in my opinion. Um, so and we have the capacity and the ability, once that reorg is done, to there's an increase in FTE required, we don't have to wait till the next budget cycle, correct? We can make that decision then?
If I may, and Joanne, I'd invite you to comment on this, uh, and I know there'll be more discussion on this throughout the retreat. We did, the budget team did, you know, approve a couple of years back, a full-time Housing Navigator, and that position is up and running. That, that was a big deal. And I think this year and uh, related to the acquisition of more voucher system from a neighboring community, I think there's been some staffing adjustments. Housing Authority component of Housing, it's again, kind of bifurcated into a couple of different components there, but um, I don't know if you can elaborate on that.
And I think this year, um, this need that um, that came forward from Housing was assistance with kind of outreach and communication. And we did have a discussion about allocating some one-time dollars to kind of help get us through. Um, I will also say that we did, we are budgeting mid-year um, for the housing move, division move, which will um, involve some salary adjustments. And like I said, likely you know, a reorg. I know Sarah's got some ideas um, for a reorg as well.
I just remember the conversation that I've had with Housing back when the bond was passed. They didn't have the capacity, the personnel capacity to really implement that at the speed that we were all hoping for. So I want to make sure we stay with that and have that be a reason why we can't continue to push forward on our housing crisis and on that.
Thank you. And I know, um, I believe Housing's gonna be presenting a little bit later as well, but thanks for the opportunity. I think
Thank you, Joanne.
Nice. Thank you, Joanne. Councilmember, that was a great question. Joanne and I have been in preliminary meetings and sitting here as well. Um, just kind of discussing through different strategies and approaches, so. We'll continue to move it forward. Really like this slide too, because I think I've already indicated a couple times um, that we've had a really good trend with our budgeted FTEs over time. As you can see, um, we've definitely been progressing, continuing to progress with our FTEs even through COVID and some of the other times. So uh, just continuing that growth and as a reminder, that current budgeted FTE is, I know, five point twenty.
Sarah, on this, and it goes back to Dr. Spence's question a, a while back. Um, I also like this graph because it shows what, how we've been doing in terms of our, the size of our organization. If you go back to pre Great Recession, uh, we finally hit that mark a few years ago, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we surpassed it. So that was just two, three years ago, and, and now we're seeding it. Uh, but when you look at this over the past what is it now, fifteen years, um, it does tell a story. And um, I think complementing this and, and hopefully we'll have that, this come up at some point in the retreat, it certainly will be in the budget book, is back to our general fund where we are in terms of uh, percentage of general fund going into labor, and we remain very competitive in, in that regard. We, we watched that. Thank you so much. So, um, we, I, I think these two graphs tell, tell the story quite aptly, and we're always watchful of the number of, of positions, new positions that are being approved. Um, one last thing to put some context in this is like last year, I mean, we had well over, I think, forty requested new positions. This year, you're seeing a handful of those that were approved. The budget team certainly uh, gave a lot of consideration of, of this, and the outcome was we want to continue to invest in our employees, our current employees. That's going to be what you see in here with respect to a lot of market adjustments and, and things of that nature. While at the same ti- time, looking at the new employee page, but it is a fraction of what was requested, and that's year in and year out. I have a question, Greg. So who is the process of deciding what, what requests get fulfilled? Is it go off of, of council priorities? Is it sheer need from each department? Like who gets to get their positions? The budget team is probably the central uh, entity that deals with this. Uh, and there's a lot of deliberation that goes on, and it's collaborative, not just between, I don't want to present the image that the budget team sits in some room and makes all of these decisions in a vacuum. That's not the case. Uh, they do so in collaboration with all the requesting divisions. Uh, we look at the significance of the new requests, you know, the importance of them to the organization, to the function of the division. And then, of course, with respect to budgetary constraints, uh, out of that comes, you know, a recommendation. The council's involvement is always there, uh, and it's present right now. Um, and it will be uh, the most meaningful involvement when the final budget is adopted, because it's a council adoption that, that occurs. So going all the way up to that final adoption are considerations like these and discussions like these. And I, I think all the questions are good, and worth to say, or ask questions, for example, the ones just asked, are we doing enough for Housing? And then you heard comments about restructure, new reporting, what has been approved, maybe what lies ahead. Uh, very important discussions. So it doesn't just stop with budget team. I think it's quite a collaboration that goes into these considerations. Thank you very much. I'm in just a little learning more about how this works as my time here continues. Be, because, because we do hear, I, I don't know if it's just because cer- certain departments are more vocal than others, or if the need is actually there, but we often hear the need for X amount of positions to make things better for us. And it helps to know how it's done. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your question. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Thank you. Um, again, as our uh, city mem- city manager kind of introduced our slide here. Um, this shows up what expenditures are making up the general fund, and we have stripped out some of the capital improvement projects because they can skew the data a little. Uh, but this is difficult for Personnel Services and People to, it's about seventy percent budget. Action with the prior slide makes really good pairing, especially with uh, the significant investment that is being made. And very um, similar to the approach, uh, gaining council priorities, gaining budget team priorities. Uh, this was our budget for approach and the priorities that our budget team shares each year uh, with all of our divisions before they submit personnel requests and other things for review during that process. Um, so this comes right from our budget team memo, and I'm also excited to share that based on these priorities, we have advanced all of those objectives, which is really amazing. So on again, once again, want to thank everyone for their support with this. Um, continuing to identify recruitment opportunities and ensure competitiveness with this market pay. That's going to be a significant piece of what we're address these slides. A plan advancement and prediction is predictable and important to keep with rising costs and compensating our employees with maintaining the cost share levels for benefit coverage contributions and to address the starting wage to be higher than the level minimum wage. And these are our compensation recommendations for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, based on our feedback, once again, from Employee Advisory Committee, our divisions, Human Resources, our Class and Comp Advisory Team, uh, we are going to continue to since closer to market and fund adjustments, market adjustments, to continue to move those roles. The city transition to market-based pay, uh, as you can see from the slide before, um, starting very shortly after COVID. Uh, and these recommendations are on twenty-five percent of qualifications annually, um, auditing positions to ensure that they're reviewed. And then uh, we have identified thirty-three positions, seventy-six FTEs, and those ones are we're, we're gonna close, close it up so that we can say we have reviewed every position in the city. Um, and that we have been able to, those adjustments to bring them to market. We've allocated funding in the fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-six for those that are at least seven and a half percent behind market. That is really important because it shows that we are addressing the positions that are the most behind. Um, so we don't get granular to this position is behind three percent, four percent. We're really looking at those that at least meet that threshold of seven and a half percent or more.
Want to ask for you to elaborate on that, just Sarah, you mentioned earlier in your presentation, started this journey years ago, now the fourth year, but maybe talk about how that seven and a half percent threshold has been when it was instituted, and, and it's not really instituted, it's, it's a goal, it's, it's an objective. And how it's been working year in and year out over the last four years.
Yes.
So hopefully we can start looking at other priorities through counts, through our uh, EAC process and focusing on, focusing on some of those more beneficial things for all employees, so. Anything on the horizon? Um, looking at um, some potential uh, retirement benefits, um, using sick leave. I don't want to misspeak on any of this, but looking at some uh, potential payouts to use for uh, medical premiums with our sick leave. Um, we're gonna be looking to that. Um, I wish I had my sheet in front of us. There's about three things, but that's the one I can recall right there. Once again, Greg, thank you very much. This has been awesome for us. Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Could you address the yes or no on increase in parental leave?
That one came down to cost. Um, that one was a cost of about five hundred thousand dollars um, to double our so to double Brandy, I think it's trip, triple? To triple our um, our parental leave on that. So that one came down to cost, and with the big numbers that you saw for markets, that one, that one kind of fell off the table.
So was the request for increase in parental leave to give fathers time off? Was it an increase in the mother's time off? What, what was the, the request that was put to the budget?
It was an increase in the bank time. Both fathers and mothers can use that as, as equal. Um, there are rules on if they both work for the city, I believe. Yeah, but it was an increase in the bank.
So where are we with regard to if, if we're trying to get market compatibility with the rest of society, where is the city with regard to the market for parental leave? Are we on, are with the county or hospital or the school district, or are we behind?
I'll let Sarah speak on that one.
Be to speak on that one, uh, because parental leave is a, it's a unique benefit. It is not something that is very typical or seen in other places. However, with our peer groups, we do lag with our peer groups in what we offer for parental. So we do currently have a parental leave program in place, four weeks uh, for both mothers and fathers. Uh, we were looking to expand it to the full twelve weeks. That's covered by FMLA. But right now, we still have four weeks in place. Um, more typically, within our peer groups, we see eight weeks. But once again, it is a, it's a very unique benefit. Um, there aren't a lot of employers that have a a type. But it is something that is very frequently asked for from employee groups. Um, so it, it's a high, um, what would you call it? A highly leveraged benefit.
And there was discussion as well to maybe notch it up a little bit, uh, maybe bring it up to six weeks, maybe bring it up to eight weeks, and those are things that we'll revisit as well.
Thank you.
Great question.
That's all I have. Any questions?
More good news.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're very good.
We're good.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Brandy Suda. Are you serving as your city? So the next part of our presentation is really talking, we want to share with you is our new budget appropriations. But before we get into what our recommendations for those new appropriations are, I want to kind of share about the total budget requests we saw. So this year, we had total requests across all funds and divisions totaling $94.7 million in new requests. And I just want to note that these totals are quite a bit higher than in prior years. As we further implement priority-based budgeting, or PBB, we have changed what requests go through the PBB request process to ensure that they align with and are evaluated against the city's key community priorities. So these numbers now include operating capital and operating grants, even with offsets. So so just to share, in the general fund, we had a total of $43.2 million in requests. In personnel, we had ongoing requests of just under $5 million. This includes over 37 positions, where only a very few were funded, as you saw earlier in the HR presentation. We also have 1.2 million in one-time requests related to personnel. All of our other requests, we had ongoing requests of 9.1 million and 27.9 in one-time requests. Looking at all other funds, total requests in personnel, we had $944,000 in requests and $60,000 in one-time related to personnel. Other budget requests totaled 12.9 million in ongoing and 37.6 million at one time, giving all other funds a total request of 51.5. Just to note, of that 94.7 million, 31.8 is related to grants. A lot of needs shared with the budget team over the three-week process when we evaluated and reviewed each of these requests. And then moving into investments in our employees, as it continues to be a high priority within our general fund. So included in our recommended budget, employee investment in the general fund totaled $5.7 million, which includes $2.8 million in merits and pay performance increases for our employees. The market adjustments Sarah mentioned earlier, the impact on the general fund is $3.5 million. This includes the regular police and fire pay plans, as well as $70,000 for medical insurance.
Just for clarification, because the 3.5 million is a different number than what Sarah, I mean, this is just general fund.
This is just general fund, right. The numbers that Sarah shared earlier were citywide. Another very high priority is infrastructure. Proposed fiscal year 2025-26 budget includes significant investments in infrastructure within the city totaling $11.5 million. Fleet investment included over $1 million. Most of that made up fleet replacements. This includes $955,000 in fleet replacements and 17 pieces of equipment. Facility improvements includes the repair and replacements for various city facilities, including a significant investment in J. Lively this next year. That's totaling almost $2.9 million. Facilities new this year, included in the proposed budget, is design funds of just over $2 million for new police and fire facilities. And you'll learn more about those as we go through the rest of today. And lastly, $5.5 million over the next three to five years. Software modernization, I never thought that word correct. This includes various software, including looking at dispatch and records for the police department, potentially a new ERP system, which includes an HR and payroll system, and many others. Significant investment in the general fund related to infrastructure. Kind of my last slide before I turn it over to Heidi to talk about how our requests align with PBB. Just talking about, at a high-level summary of how the resources and how we allocated those resources within the general fund, again, focusing on the general fund. So back in the February retreat, I shared with council that we had 1.99 million in ongoing available resources and 11.19 million in one-time. Since the February retreat, we were able to identify additional resources by, one, evaluating our expenditure execution rate and looking at benefit levels for vacant positions, as well as looking at other anticipated year, at this current year, year-end estimate savings. That provided $1.6 million in ongoing and a little over $3 million in one-time. Based on the updated revenue projections Rick shared earlier, we are able to provide an additional $425,000 in ongoing and $840,000 in one-time. And lastly, funding set-asides that are within the general fund, five-year plan. As you're aware, we have ongoing merits funded, so that $2.1 million in ongoing relates to merits and pay performance. And then we have 11.54 million in one-times. And this is related to infrastructure reserve monies that we have within the general fund. We set aside several years ago, $9 million related to stormwater infrastructure needs. We also have infrastructure reserve, $2.5 million that we've set aside for large infrastructure needs within the general fund. We have our operating capital set-asides. This includes like our fleet replacement fund, Parks and Rec replacement fund, facility improvements replacement fund of $1.3 million, as well as we have some money set aside for future fire facilities of $2.6 million. So in total, we have total available for fiscal year 2025-26 budget of 6.1 million ongoing and 26.5 million in one-time. So significant amount of money. And how we propose allocating those resources, as you can see, investing in employees, as a couple of slides earlier, that was $5.7 million of investment. That spends the majority of our ongoing resources invested in our employees in related to compensation and benefits. On the one-time side, those infrastructure investments within the general fund, 11.5 million of one-time resources. All other approved budget requests, including net of any offsets, we have $309,000 in ongoing, again, very few, as you saw, we had only a few positions approved in the budget on an ongoing basis in the general fund. That's a good portion of this, with some other minor items. And then 7.7 million in one-time other requests. As well as supporting some other funds, as we shared at the February retreat, we have, you know, some other funds needed some additional support that weren't able to fund all of their needs. This 108 is related to the airport, to ensure that they are structurally balanced. And then we did 7.3 million in one-times to other funds. This includes a half a million dollars going to the housing fund, $648,000 going into the water resource infrastructure protection fund for design related to a new facility for our wildfire crew. $4.8 million going to the Revenant Flag. This is the request that is needed for expected expenditures in fiscal year 2026. While we know that project has increased more than, that is the need, additional need needed in fiscal year 26. Sustainability, $570,000. So this is some additional assistance to further implement the cap, the action, climate neutrality, carbon neutrality plan needs. And then lastly, airport, $781,000. Again, this is many of their needs related to facilities and infrastructure. So again, even of those, you know, we had 11.5 million in general fund infrastructure, many of those other support about those other funds related to infrastructure as well. Leaving a balance of essentially zero, an extra $1,000 in ongoing and a negative $1,000 in one-time. So we've allocated all of the resources. Just to note, this does not include any primary property tax levy increase. Questions related to just kind of a very high-level overview of the general fund and total requests during the upcoming budget process. With that, I will turn it over to Heidi to talk about priority-based budget alignment.
Thank you, Brandy. So as Brandy mentioned, I'm here to talk a little bit and kick us off about the priority-based budget alignment. So just before we kick into that, I just wanted to talk really high-level that this measures the alignment with the priorities, objectives, and basic program attributes that were established by council in our community. Important note, this is just one of many tools that the budget team uses when making decisions on what we're recommending as part of the city manager's budget. So we are not 100% reliant on this, but it is a big tool because it gives us great information on how does this align with our community priorities and objectives. It's not a direct proxy for importance. So I know sometimes we hear, oh, my program isn't least aligned. That doesn't mean it's not important. It just means it doesn't align as highly with the key community priority. Many highly important programs are less aligned and least aligned. We're going to share some information on all of the different most-aligned, more-aligned, less-aligned, and least-aligned programs and what we're recommending in the budget. So you'll hear right after me about some of that. At least, the most-aligned programs kind of are about the top 25% of our programs, and then the least-aligned, bottom-scoring 20. To talk just briefly about total budget requests, and this is all funds. So as Brandy mentioned, we had 90, almost $95 million in requests this year. She did mention that we made a change as we continue to move through PBB and aligning our process more to that, that we do have operating capital and grants in there. So just quickly, I want to do a comparison to last year in case anyone looked and saw these huge numbers compared to what we presented at this time last year. So last year, excluding operating grants and capital, requests were $46.5 million, of which we approved 28.2. If we were to look at this year's and strip those two items out, our requests were 56.4 million, so just about $10 million more apples to apples to last year. And this year, we have recommended for approval 27.3. So stripping those out, we're really quite close to what we received for requests last year and what we are recommending. So this year, we are recommending, in the city manager's budget, almost $49 million of recommended requests. And here, looking at the green, in case you can't read, the green, small print. The green is requested and the light green, the dark green is requested and the light green is what we are recommending. As Brandy kind of mentioned, we here have $31.8 million in grants in those requests. Of that, recommended 49 million, $16 million of that is related to grants. You may ask, why is there such a gap? We usually, if we can fund, if a grant does not have a match, it's pretty much like, yes, let's go for it. And it will be approved. Some of them, though, have a match. So if we were unable to fund all matches, we had to prioritize what grants we wanted to pursue. Or there were a number of grants that are significantly large. So, for example, we have a $20 million grant that was requested in sustainability. It's a multi-year grant. So while we approved the grant, we only put $4.5 million of that request into 26 because we really have to look at, what can we deliver? We don't want to show 20 million all in one year. So if you're wondering, why did we only approve half of the grants? That's a portion of it, is they may be multi-year and we budget them multi-year. As far as operating capital, we had $5.6 million in operating capital, which included 4.8 million in fleet requests and nearly a million in all other requests. Here's just another way to look at all of the requested items. So kind of looking at it by the alignment with our PBB programs. So of the requests, you can see 22% aligned with our most-aligned program, 57% with our more-aligned, 18% with our less-aligned, and only 3% with our least-aligned. So if you look at this, we really are doing a great job. Our requests are aligning highly with the priorities of the community. 79% of the total requests are in the most and more aligned. And this just shows our increased needs highly aligned with what council and community priorities. Then if you look at what's being recommended as the city manager budget, it changes a little bit. So we have 28% of our approved or recommended items in the most-aligned, 42% in the more, 26 in less, and only 4% in the least-aligned. So pretty close, 70% of total recommendations are in the most-aligned.
What's the chicken and the egg here? Did you take, did the budget committee take all the requests, make decision with what to fund and what not to fund, and then say, do the analysis of most, more, less, and least? Or did you take all the requests, categorize them into alignment categories, and then make your funding? Which was first, or are they kind of, how do you do that?
They're kind of together for the decision-making. So as far as divisions making their requests, so those requests are done in PBB. So every request that you're seeing here, divisions input into PBB, they tell us what's their alignment with their programs, and all the scoring happens through that process.
Do they ever lie?
I hope not. Actually, they don't get to pick their alignment. So what happens is every program is scored as part of the PBB process against all the priorities and a number of attributes depending off its community or a governance program. So they don't, the divisions don't actually get to pick their score. We bring in community members when we do the scoring and look at all those programs. So they don't get to pick. But yeah, so they put in all their requests, which then is where this data comes from, is what are this, how do they align all the requests with them? Team, we take and a download out of the priority-based budgeting system, and we look at every single request. And yes, we do consider, you know, what is the alignment? But really, a lot of it is, we do meet some needs sometimes in least-aligned, whether it be a facility improvement, et cetera. So we kind of look at the organization needs as well as how they align. And then kind of, yes, at the end, we look and say, how did we do against that? I think just over the years, we as a budget team kind of get to understand what are the priorities. So it's kind of easy to fully align them as we're looking through them. This is a great check to say, yeah, we did a pretty good job, I think. So here's just one more slide, talking about another way to look at it. So you can see, total requested is the column on the left, the alignment, and right is our recommended. So this is percentage of the total. So we actually were able to recommend 66% of our most-aligned requests, 38% of our more-aligned, 77% of our aligned, and 73% of our least-aligned. So overall, we were able to fund and recommend over half of what we received in requests. And then we're going to go a little bit more into detail because I know you're probably dying to know what kind of makes up those. So following me, Shannon will be up first to talk about some of the items that were recommended in the most-aligned. So following me, Shannon will be up first to talk about some of the items that were recommended in the most aligned category. So if we don't have any further questions, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over.
Could be for, but you said the most aligned, but you mentioned early on, and I missed the first part of the presentation, so you already covered it. But as you mentioned, some of the least aligned are really critical, right? They're not necessarily a priority budget, but they're just, we have to do this to function as a municipality. Will we get to see what those are? Did we see it in the other slide?
So we have Shannon, Joanne, Rebecca and Scott will be.
And then we install it. It has taken us some time, especially the past few years. We talked about staffing needs earlier. We did fall behind a little bit on our headstone placement. We have been catching up. We offer a lot of weekend and off extra time work for the rest of our staff to come in and help the cemetery get caught up with that. And just talking, I don't know if Amy is online.
Yep, she is.
Wants to add anything? I know she's getting ready to head to another meeting. There she is, but Amy, is there anything you'd like to add?
You're spot on Rebecca and good. Late morning, everyone. We have fallen behind Mayor Daggett in headstone placements and we tend to try to catch up on those on Saturdays and Sundays with ongoing services literally being jam packed at the cemetery Monday through Friday. We also, our services are needed with a private cemetery for the operations of digging, grave sites and that assistance there with another cemetery, just a, on the other side of campus. So sometimes our staff are pulled away to go do that too. That's part of an agreement with that cemetery. All those little things are what can back us up on headstone placement because it does take a couple of weeks to get them. One other odd factor with headstone placements are we're unable to physically set the headstone unless they've been paid in full. So every now and then we get into a little bit of a hiccup with that with the family and we just await until they are paid in full. Then we put them in the schedule to set them. When we're like, I could go back to say two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen, when we are fully staffed with even part-time or temporary seasonal staff, we usually would have two out at the cemetery to help us in the summertime with just those typical maintenance issues, irrigation checks, mowing, weed whipping, and then that would allow other staff to pivot towards some of those other operational cemetery specific items. We have been lacking in those seasonal hires, but have been working with HR and HR has been amazing working with us on this and trying to get those more summertime seasonal positions filled. So I hope that things start to look up here in the future.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Amy.
Turn it over to Scott.
Right, thanks Rebecca. Good morning, Mayor and Council, Public Works Director. Thank you for coming to Public Works. We always like to see you here. One time if you'd like to look at the long line stripe truck, it is out. I'm out there maintaining it. Sam will be happy to show you how it works. Least aligned, so four categories. Least aligned is the one that again is essential, but doesn't always align as best as it could with some of your priorities. Again, does not underscore or mean they are less important. I think you'll also find, I'd like to note that the amount is fairly small at two point four million. The percentage is high of approval, just over one point seven nine million. But I think it's interesting that it's always a very small sliver of pie, but a very important one. There are a few large items in here. The first is the regional plan election in two thousand twenty-six. So there's a cost to the clerk's office to host with the county that election. That is a good portion of this. So again, it does not align really well, but it's an essential form of government. Airport facility and building maintenance. This is some supplemental custodial work and some maintenance of some project work at the airport, including the parking lot maintenance. Community events operation, the biggest bulk of this number is the Independence Day holiday drone show scheduled for July fourth, I believe. And then special projects, a lot of this are a very small number, high quantity, building some base budgets for the city manager's office, working on some training elements, working on some memberships, all very small dollar items, but they add up as a whole collectively citywide to about ninety thousand. All of these funds are also one time, which I think is important to note. But again, a very small piece of the majority of the funding approved for twenty-six or recommended for twenty-six. Questions on least aligned? Hunch this slide isn't accurate. I have to turn it back to you, Stacy.
Make a. Yeah, I would.
Yeah, please Shannon.
Do the CIP. Sarah will be here in person at twelve thirty. So we could keep housing neutrality at twelve thirty. Maybe we can look some other items up.
Yeah, I think it does. And before we move on, we just had the two DCM, Shannon and Joanne and then Rebecca and Scott present on all of this stuff. Can we recognize they're good work?
Again, this is just a refresher. If you recall, we had our Capitol retreat on March twenty-seventh and we went through all of those projects throughout the day. And this is just a reminder of our Capitol project numbers, quite a significant amount of projects on the horizon. Just a reminder, just touching on some of the, the projects that were included in these different categories under general government. We talked about the IT fiber project. I will say that CJ put an update in the, in your email today just on how that project is moving forward and some key things that may be asked by community members. So read that closely. And we have the JW Powell substation and fire design. The amount is included in that general government. Work on the library, the aquaplex siding and also downtown mile. I'm not hitting on all of the projects, but these are the big, biggies in general government. Under streets, we have our streets and transportation. We have our road repair and safety, Beulah University, John Wesley Powell, Lone Tree, Butler Fourth, Fourth and Lockett and our FUTS asphalt repairs also included in streets and transportation. For BBB, if you recall, we went through all of those great projects that were being worked on, arts and beautification. We also have our Bushmaster sport courts, our new West Side Park and some other pros items as well. And then under airport, the biggie there is the snow removal building. So a large amount of dollars, yes.
You can finish what you were saying.
No, I was just going to say just large amount of dollars. We weren't going to go into much detail because we did spend the whole day on this, but for questions.
Have we received any additional information from the Department of Transportation Federal about our grants?
I'm going to pull Stacy up for this. We have not, but we did get. No, we're talking about all of our grants, but have we received any additional information? I know we just got the letter from Department of Transportation.
Yeah, that was some getting letters, general letters, just saying comply, comply, those kinds of things, but not specific to a grant.
Are they still under review, like Butler Avenue?
Oh, yeah, so the, that is under review. But again, we've heard that as long as the street, you know, it's not just a, it's a complete street where it has pedestrian multimodal and the street, that those are pretty good to go. If it's just like a single foots trail, they're looking at those a little tighter. But we don't have any of those right now. So and then we did hear on the FEMA grant for the Killip outlet, it's at the regional directors for signature. So things are starting to move still. That's good news.
It's good news.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I've seen Nicole is here. I wonder if we can.
Before we do, you know, and it's just a comment going back to a discussion a short while ago, you know, these numbers are really impressive. You know, as I mentioned, so far, so good on this, but you see how much reliance the city has on grant dollars for these projects. These numbers reflect that pretty emphatically. And so a lot going on and we'll just keep moving forward, but so far, so good.
And we're delivering projects.
You are delivering projects. We have orange cones everywhere.
Everywhere. I think we're going to move back. It looks like Nicole's in the room and do the carbon neutrality.
Great, thank you. I heard you say good afternoon, but this is impressive. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Apologies, I had to step out for a quick board meeting. I am here to talk about the carbon neutrality plan and the alignment of this budget through the lens of carbon neutrality. For our new council members, I do want to just take a moment and explain how we analyze the new funding requests through the lens of carbon neutrality. And we are fortunate, Heidi Derry Berry was sharing the priority based budgeting tools that we have. And this is an extension of that. We have been able to work with Resource X to incorporate additional questions into the software and to the interface that allow us to analyze how new funding requests align or advance. So I want to make sure that there's a lot of alignment and there's also advancement of our goals that are identified in the carbon neutrality plan. And this has multiple benefits. This allows us to stay accountable to our climate commitments and it also allows us to track new funding through this lens. So we can say not only to you, the electeds, but to our community, what we are investing in climate action. And then of course, it does create opportunity for education and excuse me, collaboration. There we go. Fantastic. So this year, we are essentially looking at about five percent of the recommended budget that is in requests aligning and advancing the climate actions that are identified in the carbon neutrality plan. And then within that context, just about one, under one point four million advances the carbon neutrality plan. And this spans across the entire organization. So I want to make sure that that is clear. Just because we have a sustainability division and a climate section, that does not mean that we are leading all of these efforts. So we have a lot of movement and activity within the organization. And I have a few highlights on the screen. Can you see past my head? Highlights on this, the slide that actually offer support for that. And then we have about one point two million in new funding requests that align with the carbon neutrality plan. I think what we've highlighted here are some of the most critical. And that is that we've got, and this isn't a big ticket amount, but we have funding requested for education of our, our fleet team to work on electric vehicles. This is a big transition. So as we increase our fleet, we have to think about the infrastructure, not only in charging stations, but how we maintain these vehicles at the same time. So while a seventy-five hundred dollar investment is a very small percentage of the overall budget, this is a really important step that we're supporting our commitments. We have really excited about this. And here at Core Services and collaboration with, with the folks over in Public Works, we are going to be investing in fast charging infrastructure. So this is what we call level three charging infrastructure. These are the fast chargers that will only be available for city fleet. This is super critical, especially for the vehicles that are out on fast rotation. This can be emergency response during flooding incident, whatever it may be. We really need to ensure that we've got access to those fast charging, the fast charging infrastructure. So we're really excited about this investment. It's critical and we will of course, keep the council updated if the budget moves forward and then how we continue to move forward. On that same note of excitement, we have a hundred thousand dollars that has been recommended. And this is a shared, yes, right back there, Chief Gaylor and I. This is a shared initiative between fire and sustainability. We want to launch a home hardening pilot. And this is, and I think most of the council is familiar with that terminology, but just in case you're not, home hardening is essentially wildfire preparedness. It's protecting the home. This is a very, can be a very daunting task for residents, property owners or investment owners to take on. But through the great work of the folks in the fire department, we know where our high risk neighborhoods are. And we are going to be launching this program. We're going to mirror the framework of our flood prevention grant program. So we've got a really nice framework in place already. We feel that we are going to be able to hit the ground running. And this aligns nicely with some funding assistance that we're. So we feel that this investment, not only in our community, but it's an investment to say if we get future funding, we, we're ready to go. This is shovel ready. And then you will hear from our housing folks, but I really want to reiterate and a shout out to the housing team. We are in this together, the housing emergency, the climate emergency. This is not an either or, this is an and. And so if you've read the very dense carbon neutrality plan, like I know everyone has, you will know, I know you have. You'll know that the, the housing plan is actually referenced and in there, just like the active transportation master plan is. This is about our community. Climate action is about our community. It is not a siloed one initiative. So we threw in here, but we are really proud of the incentive pay for affordable housing at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And council, I do want to add, because five percent may not seem like a lot. And I want to just take a moment, if I may, and hit pause and bring the council back to our recent update from the climate team. It was the semi-annual update to the council on the carbon neutrality plan. And you may recall a graphic that we have shared with the council a few times that really focuses on the stage we're at, which is heavily relied, it's relying heavily rather, on policy and code development. And so I just want to make sure that we understand that fiscal investment is incredibly important, but so is policy. And you're going to be seeing examples of that coming through the code analysis project, the six-year cycle of building codes and many more things in that nature. So I don't want five percent of the recommended budget to sound like a bad thing. It's a great thing. We're continuing to invest and we're continuing to invest in our existing programming. Our weatherization programming that is in our base budget is critical to our community. And likely even more important right now as the low income home energy assistance program is potentially on the chopping block at the federal level, that's going to put more, more importance on the work that we do here at the local level there. So I just want to say, we've got a lot of great work in play. And right now, this five percent, I don't want it to seem like a negative thing. It's a, it's a good investment. So we will be back in front of you with lots of in the coming months.
Just have a comment or just an observation for you to clarify. To that point, a big, large portion of our carbon neutrality goal plan is conversion to EV vehicles. And that's not something we just write a check for and just wipe out all the cars. And so it's on a, what we expect for, you know, certain vehicles to come to be replaced this year in the budget. So just because we're not replacing a hundred percent, which would be ridiculous, we're doing it as we can when those vehicles, different equipment mature out and we're replacing those.
Exactly, exactly. And similar in the, in the, with the public transition, we can help foster market transition. We can't direct it. Providing infrastructure like we have and partnering with APS on our electric vehicle charging stations and getting those out into the community, that is the critical support that, that we can play. And just as a teaser, we, on May ninth, you will be considering the electric vehicle rate, the discussion. discussion, but we are also going to be installing some more charging stations for the community and for our fleet from this year's budget. So the infrastructure is critical, but yes, we are not, and same with electrification, quite frankly, we are not asking or telling anyone. We are encouraging people to consider electric, electrification as they're phasing things out.
A quick question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Eric. I was curious, is, and there might not be an answer for this question, it just came to mind, is there like a return upon investment quotient or something that, or something that's quantifiable?
Absolutely. And I'd be happy to, when we have our next sit-down, we can actually walk through the return on investment analysis that we conducted for the whole Carbon Neutrality Plan. The fiscal benefit to the community is significantly higher than the investment in the actual work. And so we have priced that out. It's quite lengthy. We have not done it for specific line item by line item, but that is something, when time permits, we absolutely could look at more on that annual basis.
So I'll be happy to hear that information at our next meeting. Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you touch on the grant for the resilience?
Yes, absolutely. I was going to do that a little later, but this is perfect timing. No, that's great. So there was a question earlier this morning about grant termination. So just as a quick update, the Sustainability Division did, well, the city received notification for a stop work order last month on our EPA resilience hub grant. This was a $1 million grant that helped establish three resilience hubs throughout our community with our community partners and at Southside Association, Sunnyside, and then the Community Assistance Team of Flagstaff. And we, we did have to issue a stop work to all our sub-receipients. There were three positions that were partially funded in our community through this grant. So there was a stop work order, which was a very hard thing to swallow because these are small nonprofit stations in our community that provide critical services to, to all aspects of our Flagstaff. We formally appealed, and I just want to shout out Stacy back there, Christina Kinnear and Kevin Fensel and Legal, and of course, City Manager's Office. It was an incredible effort and internal collaboration. It felt like a mini thesis. I don't know. There was a lot of research, but we feel confident that the EPA's new guidelines, that this work, this is about bringing critical resources to our community during all hazard events. It could be ready, set, go kits. It's helping people sign up for ready, set, go. It's helping people build their own clean air filters for their homes for free or very minimal cost. So we feel confident that there is alignment with the new EPA goals. Unfortunately, we will not hear, we have up to six months, I believe, Stacy, please correct me, but November, I believe, is what we're anticipating for the review of our appeal.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, just in talking to the, our partners about all of the workshops that they have done, and I mean, it is really critical work, and it's, and it's helping people who, you know, aren't, aren't the people who are always showing up at things and getting that kind of assistance. So it's really important that we be paying attention to those neighbors and those neighborhoods.
And one thing I neglected is there's also a lot of job development work that's being done in those workshops as well. So it's not just in all hazards. So I apologize for missing, there's, there's training that's going on at our resilience hubs as well. It's, the market of dreams is, you know, it is everything about a community center, a safe place to go for youth and adults. And yeah, we're, we're going to stay positive. We're going to continue to support this work as best we can and with the limited resources that we have. Thank you for asking.
So there's this $600 million price tag being talked about, associated with the full Carbon Neutrality Plan. This falls woefully short of covering that. And while, while the, the question is a little bit, it's, it's a serious question, I'm hoping you can just articulate and discuss through that a little bit, just another opportunity to do so.
Absolutely.
Public record.
Yep. And so just to bring everyone back and make sure we're on the same page, is when the Carbon Neutrality Plan was adopted, staff and sustainability worked with an investment firm to actually price out the cost. And so, of course, it's an estimated cost as well as the, the return on investment, not only for the city of Flagstaff, but for the community. And so I want to make sure that it is clear, the $600 million estimate is for the community-wide Carbon Neutrality Plan. This is not just the city's lift. With that in mind, the estimates for this investment span across the community. So it's not saying, city of Flagstaff, you have to spend $600 million. We recognize that our partners are part of that. It's incredible that NAU has committed to carbon neutrality by 2030. The college, the university is, has a huge role to play in that space. At the USD is working on a climate action plan. So it's collaborative work. The work we are doing right now to analyze our numbers, where we are in terms of emissions, we are also going to align a cost estimate with that. It is going to vary a little bit here and there on what our investment is, but the big numbers that we see in that $600 million is really investing in our built environment as is. It's helping to get homes to be more efficient and more safe. One program that I will just offer that supports this, and we didn't take it into consideration when we did the calculations, is we received nearly three-quarters of, well, three-quarters of a million dollars from federal earmarks a couple of years ago, and we're just about to launch, in a very slow process, getting the, the money to the, to the community, but we're working as fast as we can on it. But we didn't take that into consideration when we priced out what is going to be the burden of that, is we didn't incorporate what grants would be available because it's just an unknown. The weight of that sum can also be reduced through policy in future built environment. And so there's a lot of variables that go into it. I think that perhaps a work session might be of value to walk through that.
I have a question there. And just to that point, it may be better spent at a work session, a question I've had, and I think we've talked about it, yes. When you and I first met before I even ran, we talked about having a device to actually measure in real time.
Real time.
And so is that something that's coming online in the foreseeable future, where we can actually major, you know, what we're actually made into atmosphere versus, well, these practices will help reduce, but how do we really get to that number?
Exactly. Yeah. And my hope is that we'll see, we're getting closer to that finish line.
NAU is working on that, right?
It is, yep. It's an offshoot in NAU, so NAU professors and researchers. With that in mind, I think in this greater work session, we have the opportunity to talk about what data we use to actually measure emissions. But you're exactly right, Council Member Matthews, there are some emissions that are absolutely known, energy use, let's use that as an example, but there are some that we have to use data and that is based on fuel sales. So the big one has always been, well, what about all these people who are visiting Flagstaff and driving through? So there, there are speculations on some of the policies. That's a good reminder to check in with the folks over at the lab and, and see how they're doing, because you're exactly right. Some of the data we use is more variable than others as we generate our outcomes.
It's helpful to understand, for our community to understand how we're, how we're really, you know, moving that goalpost and say, we're, we're achieving this, we're achieving that, and how are we concluding that? So that would be really helpful to really dig into that.
And I like that because it goes back to the fact, we're all in this together. The city cannot be the only driver in this initiative. People's behaviors have a huge impact on our goals. Thank you for that.
I said, that's why I got a gold star.
Yes, it's true.
You did get a gold star.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. I'm just going to hand this to you. Thank you. It's the money, D. The money.
Morning, Mayor, Council members. My name is John Comer, Assistant Budget Manager, and I will kick you off this section, and I'll only be talking briefly before I hand it over to our division directors to talk about budget appropriations in each of these, in each community priority area. But I'll briefly talk about community priorities, the corresponding objectives to those priorities. And I've got one slide on our current year budget alignment to those priorities. So without further ado. Hey, I'm sure you are all very familiar with this slide, but a brief refresher, community priorities, these are high-level overarching goals that we strive for as a city. There are seven priorities. One of the top, right, high-performing governance, that is a priority that directs our inward, our inward-facing programs such as IT, HR, finance, et cetera. And then the other six priorities are community priorities, and these are, these direct our external-facing, our community-facing programs, fire, parks, libraries, et cetera. Now, within each of those priorities, we have five or six objectives, and these are detailed action items to achieve those community priorities. That would be if we're talking about a priority environmental stewardship, one of the objectives could be engage community members through education and moan. Now, while these priorities are typically static, the objectives are, can be more dynamic, and they can change with public input and council approval. And I think Rick Tatter will be talking about that possible update schedule later in this retreat. And as always, we always include for your reference definition, the terms that are involved, that we use in our priorities and objectives, just to make sure us and the public and everybody, we're all speaking the same language when we are reviewing these priorities and objectives. Okay, that's the fun part. It's what we're looking at here, this is our base budget alignment to our specific priority areas. Things to note here is this is current year, this is not future-looking, this is FY '24, '25, and this is operating and ongoing only, so there's no capital in here. What you can see is the darker shaded bars, it adds more alignment to these priority areas. And it basically works its way from most aligned, more aligned, less aligned, least aligned. And in this category, there isn't even a fifth category, which is no alignment. So some takeaways that I can see from this graph, I guess, is that we have significant funding to programs that are most aligned with safe and healthy communities and livable communities. We have less funding to programs that are both aligned with robust Brazilian economy and environmental stewardship, although we can see that they also have large bars that are more aligned. That is really all I have. I'm going to turn it over to CJ, who's going to talk about budget appropriations in high-performance governance, should you have any questions.
John. Hi. Good morning, Mayor, Council. I was supposed to be in the afternoon, so one of the things that I'm doing from like a, just kind of a personal development perspective, is trying to get a little bit better at kind of some public speaking and some storytelling. So I was expecting you all to have just eaten lunch, exhausted, so I had developed this thing to kind of like, let's get back into it whenever before lunch. So I'm going to just go into it anyways, and maybe it's a little overkill, but it'll be fine.
So let me take you back for a moment, not to City Hall or to budget spreadsheets, but to a rocky shoreline during a violent storm. Imagine the waves crashing, the wind howling, visibility near zero, ships offshore struggling to stay the course, captains uncertain if they will make it home to see their children. But in the distance, there's one thing that cuts through the chaos, a lighthouse, steady, bright, and unshaken. Now, here's the twist, that lighthouse wasn't built during the storm. It was built during calm waters. It was built because someone years or even decades earlier understood that storms would come. And when they did, we needed a foundation strong enough to guide us and a light, bright, bright enough to lead others. So that's what we're talking about today. So we're constantly facing major challenges, federal policy shifts, new funding landscapes, evolving community needs, and a world that moves faster every single year. And while it might not always look like a storm on the surface, these pressures will challenge us unless we're prepared. So this is our moment to invest, not reactively, but strategically, to build that lighthouse. So we're looking at overhauling outdated software systems that currently slow us down. We're refining our business processes to be more nimble, transparent, and effective. We're investing in our employees for sustainable organizational health. We're adjusting to the funding realities with foresight rather than frustration. We're doing all of this with one true north, serving our community better, faster, and smarter. So this isn't just about creating a balanced budget, it's about upholding one of our most critical community priorities, high-performing governance. Because governance isn't just about what we do, it's about how well we do it and how prepared we are for what's next. So council has given us that light. Light is represented in the bullet points on this slide. These are our objectives for high-performing governance. Now, let me show you how staff is going to build the foundation so that light can shine for all to see. So one of the first things I wanted to talk about is a major overhaul to how we do business. We are investing, investing in upgrading nearly all of our major software systems. This includes things like our purchasing software, or HR software, or payroll software, even our 911 dispatch software, and many others, some of which you see on this slide. We even have one system that's still from the 1980s, really excited to get off of that one. What this will do is improve our technology, but it will also force us to evaluate each and every one of our business processes. It provides an opportunity to, for us to reimagine the way that we provide services. Rather than being comfortable with the way things have always been done, we have the opportunity to level up everything we do. And as we do that, we will build in the flexibility and tools to stand tall and strong against any storms that come. So as part of this initiative, my plan is to engage council over the next few months to incorporate your thoughts and goals into that overarching strategy. So begin to think about like the type of data that you think would be helpful to help, you know, to make policy decisions. Now will be an ideal time to build out these processes and technology to ensure council is best equipped to do your job, just as we are making staff best equipped to do our jobs. On the next slide, you'll see some other aspects of our lighthouse foundation. I specifically want to call out some of these middle points right here. So for the past several years, Greg has been strategically working to ensure Team Flagstaff has the best staff. We've worked on market-based pay, which has better aligned our compensation strategy with where the market is. Additionally, HR and the Discover's Flagstaff team have joined forces to up our game in recruitment advertising. So now we're positioned where we can demonstrate the value of working for Team Flagstaff. We're competitive from a salary perspective, but we're also demonstrating that we have much more to offer above and beyond salary in relation to our awesome community and an organization people would be excited to work for. So that's been really exciting, really big shout-out to both HR and the Discover Flagstaff team on that collaboration. And I can tell you, I've noticed it a lot in some of my recent recruitments, we've been getting significantly more applicants. really exciting, really big shout out to both HR and the Discover Flagstaff team on that collaboration. And I can tell you, I've noticed it a lot in some of my recent recruitments. We've been getting significantly more applicants, and the ones we're getting are of much higher caliber. So it's really been working. And it's all credit to that strategic priority that Greg has put on our employees over the past few years, and we're thankful for City Council for supporting that strategy. In addition, if you, if you go down, you can see we're making investments in the health and growth of our city staff. The last two bullet points are specific to some of our public safety staff to ensure that they have the tools they need to maintain health in such a demanding job. We're grateful for the sacrifice they make, you know, each and every day to keep our community safe, and we want to make sure we're consistently honoring that commitment and sacrifice. So we go to the next slide, you will continue to see investment in our staff. The fourth bullet point talks about improvements to training, so our employees have growth opportunities and skills to serve our community. If we move back up more towards the top of this slide, you'll see investment in ways to improve serving our community. So we're improving ways we service the short-term rental licenses, we're working on updating our code to better align with priorities of the community, keep up with best practices, and achieve our climate and housing goals. Even funding for council initiatives to directly impact the community where you think the greatest need is. Finally, this last bullet point, and the first one on the next slide is in relation to grants. We're seeing more and more demands on our grant staff. Stacy BK and her team have been incredible in meeting the demands, especially with all this uncertainty and changes at the federal level. We've had grants that having to be reworked, different requirements, and all sorts of changes. So grants are critical to several projects and programs within the city, and the grants team is leveling up to meet this changing landscape. And it's just amazing what Stacy and her team have done. The remainder bullet points on this slide and the ones on the next are in relation to PD. We recently hired Chief Connolly to join Team Flagstaff, and boy, has he hit the ground running. He has a strategic vision for the department and how we can better support our community. It's been awesome seeing this vision take form. It's a mixture of technology investments, recruitment improvements, reorgs, and just increasing the already high standards we have for our sworn officers and professional staff at PD. So I'm super excited to see what the next few years look like as his incredible vision comes into focus. So to finish, I'm inviting you to stand strong with me and the incredible Team Flagstaff staff at the shoreline, not in fear of the storm, but in confidence that we're building something that lasts, something our future council members, staff, and residents will thank us for. So let's build this lighthouse together. Hopefully, that wasn't over the top for before lunch.
One of your points was to centralize our drones. How many drones do we have, and how big are they? Little tiny ones or big ones?
So currently, I think the number of drones total is seven. I would need to validate that number exactly. Most of them are of the smaller type. What we are actually looking to do is kind of be a little more strategic from that perspective. There are a couple different ways that we use drones. We use drones to take, you know, pictures and videos of projects that we're doing, just to kind of provide like PR and things like that for different projects that we're doing throughout the city. The small drones tend to work really well for that, so we actually have quite a few of those. We can use them for things like facilities inspections rather than getting on the roof. We can, we use them for mapping purposes, a lot of those different types of things. So on that side of the house, what we're looking at doing is getting one large drone. The other issue actually that we're running into with drones is a lot of, the most popular brand of drones is DJI. It's a Chinese brand, and there's a lot of movement at the federal level to start to ban some of those Chinese-specific drones due to, you know, security concerns and things like that. So we're kind of looking at, what does that look like? We're getting all of our drone operators together. They actually had a meeting earlier this morning and talked about the standardization that we're going to be going through in replacing some of our drone fleet, centralizing that, looking at kind of one larger drone that can kind of do a little bit more different payloads, that sort of concept, and then still having several smaller drones that are used for more of those, those pictures and kind of some just general mapping and things like that. And then there's a separate need for drones, and that's in emergency response. And so the PD perspective and the fire perspective, we'll have kind of a separate fleet. It's still part of that centralized drone program, but it's not centralized in the sense that we're going to keep them all at City Hall. It's, they're actually needing emergency services. And so we're starting to grow some of those capabilities and things like that, and really looking at kind of what that standard looks like going forward.
Thank you for that. And you've, you've answered in terms of the equipment. Can you help me understand, do we have dedicated drone pilots, or is, how do you have the drones spread out, people that know how to do a drone in other departments?
Yeah, so there are FAA guidelines and actual training and certifications that you have to go through to become a drone pilot. So we have those in several different divisions. We have them in IT, we have them in public works, we have them in engineering, in the police department, the fire department. So we actually have them kind of spread throughout. And that's kind of the whole point of this program is to be flexible to all of the different division needs and kind of be a collaborative from that perspective, but also kind of centralize the management of this whole program as it's just, it's grown tremendously.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That's smart remarks. I'm open for anything.
You were going to say that IT was the lighthouse.
No, we're all, we're all building the lighthouse together. It's not just one division, one person, it's, it's all of us together. It's Team Flagstaff.
Chief. Always tough going after the master guys. You know, before I get started, I think the, the earlier conversation on the compensation recommendations and the obvious support that we see from the City Council on behalf of all the men and women that I get the opportunity to lead, I just want to say how grateful we are. So thank you all. That's, I'll just say, that's big news. And so gives us a fighting chance to hang on to the tremendous professionals that we have because they're able to stay in the community. So I don't have to explain all the relationships, but we're thankful. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about the safe and healthy community area. As you might guess, Chief Connolly lost a coin toss, so I got this, and he's going to be with you in a little bit. But these are the things that make the community safe and health. And if you've been around local government, that's the name of the game for us. Oftentimes, we're providing police-fire protections. We, we keep the community safe through sanitation efforts that are in public works and in the water department. And so all these things are intertwined, and these are the collection of objectives that fall underneath the safe and healthy community. And you can see strong relationships with the community and public safety services, supporting social services, community partners, and housing opportunities. And then related to that, the following one, provide and build upon alternative response models. And the best example of that that I have seen in local government has been this, this community's care program, where we've been able to identify that the traditional ways of responding were inadequate, and in fact, somewhat detrimental to some of our other mission-oriented work and, and providing a different, more suitable response. The care unit is one of the best examples I've ever seen. Providing, making sure that public safety services are resourced and our staff and are trained to be responsive to the needs in the community, promote physical and mental well-being. We have, and I'm sure Chief Connolly will weigh in on this, but we're so grateful for the investment in the mental health of our responders, who oftentimes see the worst things that a community has to offer, and has, has that response at three in the morning where they're dealing with things in the community that many others don't recognize. So we're grateful for that investment, the opportunity to take care of our folks that are out there on the wild. And then ensuring the built environment is safe through the use of consistent standards and practices. And we talked about that recently, about the five Es. So much of that is so important in protecting our community, whether that's the recent conversation you had associated with the resource protection standards in our community, or the overview you received recently about the code environment and making sure that we're contemporary and we have contemporary codes in place. And so all a big part of having a quality community and having a safe community. So the Fire Academy and all that it takes, we've identified a number of, through attrition and growth, we're going to have a big training mission over the next few years. About 60% of the department, or I should say, at least half the department, is under that five-year mark. We have got a lot of new folks, and we are in a, in a position of being a training and succession-oriented mission. So we're really, we take that on. It's always fun to introduce new folks, but we have to make sure they're well-trained so they can serve, and so they can take care of each other and be safe in the hazard environment. Increase public funding allocations for fire apparatus, vehicle maintenance, and I, I stand up here and admit it, we have a, a big fleet of high-cost equipment, and it takes a lot to keep them on the road. And so the investment into making sure we're ready to go and ready to stay is an important part of the, the budget presentation this year. The continuation of the care program, the, the alternative response programs, and continuing to support that and provide oversight from that out of the fire department is, is an important part of our mission. The increased funding, we're seeing more patients, and so we're having more expenses associated with the treatment of those patients. It's just, just what it takes to provide rubber gloves to our care providers on every call, stretching 18,000 runs. That cost exponentially goes up as our call activity goes up. So appreciate the opportunity to maintain that staffing and the needs as our call activities grow. Launch a home hardening pilot project, pretty exciting. Nicole talked about it already, but you know, the resource protection discussion that you had a couple of weeks ago really was dealing with, how do we protect the environment as growth occurs? What this program does, it, it gives us more information. We're going to be able to run pilot programs in high-risk areas, and we're going to learn what it takes, how do we protect the built environment that's already here. And you've seen the pictures of, here's the treatment that's occurred in the forest, here's what the landscape looks like immediately adjacent to it inside the city limits, and that's where the work needs to be done. That's where we're going next. This pilot program is going to give us a lot of data on how we might make inroads into protecting the community through that type of resource hardening. So a couple of these, dedicated funding to downtown alleyway snow removal and in consultation with our Pro's Director, where what we're talking about here is a partnership. We certainly have resources that address this, but we also need outside resources, so contracts to allow people to come in, and particularly in our downtown area where it's critical, we get those pathways opened up, made safe, so that we can continue to have people come to the community and be safe. The build-out of a one-acre expansion of the cemetery, I'll note here, is when we begin this project, it takes about a year to put the infrastructure in place, get the place looking appropriate, and then business, the actual use of that acre is, is about a year away after. Initiative on development of the Highland Mesa Park and the Cheshire Park expansion, initiate the first five years of capital project funding for open space funded from the, the bed board and beverage tax, and improved safety and performance of buildings with weather, weatherization rebates across, across the residential sector, a, a initiative led by sustainability. Additionally, additional funding to complete the airport emergency plan. So if you recall, we had the airport emergency drill not too long ago. The AAR may have been wrapped up. I think I saw something yesterday. I think we saw that completed. The after-action review is what the AAR is. So what lessons do we learn from conducting the exercise at the airport? All those recommendations are now forthcoming, and now will help to inform the airs, the airport emergency plan. Update the continuity of operations plan and continuity of government plan. Those are really important plans. And we talked about the lighthouse. That's compelling example, right? So when there's disaster in the community, citizens expect the light to be on at City Hall. And so we, we go through the planning process, the continuity of operations and the continuity of governments, COOP and COG, as it's known. Those are the plans for the, for the city to be resilient, to be responsive, and to be open for business. So those are really super important plans. We're excited. We're getting a chance. That's one of the things that we had envisioned as we built this component within city government, emergency management component. These are the types of activities that we really need to see come into fruition. Administer and enhance the emergency alert rave system. That's a system that allows emergency managers and dispatchers to send emergency notifications to very customized group within the city. I'll tell you, one that's most important to me is in, in this month, if we see smoke in the area in some portion of the town, and I need to mobilize the entire police or, excuse me, fire department, this tool is how we're going to be able to notify, and it's going to be such a tremendous improvement. Some of the tools we've had in the past have not been functional, not been reliable. We're very, very pleased that this capability is being put in place. And that's just one little aspect of the notification that can occur. Emergency operations, the city's IMT, as we respond to post-fire flooding and things of that nature, all will be supported by this capability. And partnering with the community stakeholders when impacting emergency management, ensuring dispatchers are provided accurate lifesaving instructions during medical emergencies. And this says with cards, and in actuality, this system is being automated. And so it'll be built into the console of the dispatcher, and so we're excited about that. That allows us to send the right response to the call. And so what, what is the right response? Is it an emergency response for fire paramedics, or is it the care unit? And so these types of tools are really important for us. They also take a tremendous strain off of the actual dispatchers, as they have automated systems to help them get to the correct dispatch and get those resources going. And then sustain the license plate recognition system to improve the ability to proactively address crime and respond quickly. It's a part of that suite of technology that the police chief has brought, that CJ was, was bringing, making, bringing to our attention, that the police chief has said that technology is a way that we're going to be able to meet the demands in the community. So those are the public safety aspects. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for me?
Take a lunch break.
Okay. We are getting ready for lunch as we finish up the morning session. Just want to thank you for your, your engagement, great presentations. Thank you all who presented. I'm going to speak for Stacy. We are ahead of schedule, which is great. Yeah, right? We will break for lunch, and then I guess, Mayor, is we might want to just, early this afternoon, if we stay on the schedule.
Drag it out.
Want to drag it out? I like to drag it out. If we continue to stay ahead of schedule, I, I think the idea would be to let you enjoy your afternoons a little bit earlier than, than expected, and let you get on with your day, and then we'll resume tomorrow, unless there's a different thinking. I'm not sure that we can start front-loading tomorrow's agenda today, so I'm assuming we'll just get out early today. Edge nodding. So enjoy your lunch. Thank you again for this morning's engagement. And what, what time are we convening, Joanne? And, uh, what, what time are we convening, Joanne or Shannon or anybody?
Twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty? Twelve-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
Online. Going down. Down, down. In closer, there you go.
All right, I got turned around.
You have the clicker. I'm going to stand up.
Ladies and gentlemen, Sarah Darv.
You certainly don't feel like that was necessary, but thank you and thank you for your patience with me being unable to be here this morning.
Thanks for being here.
I had some really significant knee surgery three weeks ago today, and this is my first official outing, besides going to my mother-in-law's for Easter dinner. So I am so glad to be here with you guys. Thank you so much and for the flexibility in rearranging the schedule due to my absence. I booked other things around the 12:30 timeframe, but y'all move too fast. So, or let me say efficiently instead of too fast. I am super happy to be here to talk to you today about the budget allocations towards our 10-year plan implementation and investments. I'm happy to answer questions as we go. No need to hold them. We're going to change topics. So if you have something about what we're talking about, please let me hand, we'll go from there. Nicole, this one's been foreshadowed a couple of times. I know Nicole's previous slide, the bottom housing incentive pay for affordable housing. I want to be clear that that's not paid for staff for doing a good job. Although I got rather excited when I first read it and then realized that's probably what that is. So here's a perfect example of overlap between our two priorities, and that is funding for the incentive policy for housing. This year allocated $250,000 towards which of course goes to provide incentives for developers choosing to include low and moderate income housing within their developments. It's provided proportionally based on what they are providing to the community as a benefit.
I have a question. Go ahead. Can you, I'm interested in looking at this a little bit deeper and can you explain how it's used, how the developers are using it, and is $250,000 enough? To me, it seems like we would benefit if we were to try and increase that number.
Thank you for the question. I appreciate it. As this functions now, developers turn in a reservation request on building X. I would reserve access to this so that we can have some advanced planning on what's coming in and be able to budget towards that. But development is not always about, this is going to shock everyone in the room, development does not always happen on the anticipated schedule that is created as the project is created. And so we play a very careful balancing act with, we have a list of reservations. How much money would it take to pay for all of these reservations? That number right now is about a million. But not all of that's going to come in within this coming fiscal year. There are some projects on there that are still going through different funding processes, going through, for example, Foundation for Senior Living has a reservation in for the downtown properties. We're still unsure if they're going to get tax credits this round or what's happening on there. So they're in that number, but they've been in that number for the past probably four years at this point in time. So I know Habitat for Humanity, there's a reservation for all 40 units that they're building at Timber Sky within that number. This year is four. So it depends on how many, when they come in, when they come online. There's been a commitment from the city manager's office and the budget team that if during a fiscal year, we run out of available funds within this account, that we can go to budget team to work to identify any available funding that could go towards this. And that's happened in the past as well, especially if a rather large eligible request comes in. We are working on an amendment to this policy. It's a very surgical go-in and correct some wording that used to mean one thing that, but now because of some legal proceedings means something different. And so we're going, this should be in front of you. Housing Commission starts in 20 minutes. Housing Commission is reviewing it today and it should be in front of you next month for this change. And so it depends on a number of things. I don't want to say it's like a card game, like a three-card Monte, where's the money, but it's more sophisticated with that of tracking. What do we anticipate coming in in the next year? That type of thing. Does that help explain the process a little more?
If it does, I want to ask about Habitat. You said four, but they're building 10.
Are they, okay.
The Blitz build is 10.
It's paid for. In fact, I think all of those permits have been paid for with the exception of $1,400 for the pieces. Forgive me if my numbers are off today. I may not be fully on my own game. So, yeah. Those 10, and I had a message from Justina this morning that those are paid for except one type of permit, which is 1,400 and it's in process and that's covered.
Might be a question for Rick and Brandy, but I'm wondering if there's ever been thought of having this fund billed from one year to the next if it's not entirely used, so a rollover.
We already do that.
We do do it.
Yes, budget team has always been very grateful with letting us roll over dedicated funding for this type of matter. I'm going to talk about another source of funds in a second where it seems like it's not enough, but it's one that we've been able to roll over because sometimes it's not enough money within one year. But annual allocations towards that goal have enabled us to do larger things.
Thank you.
Fact that, you know, if we run out of money that we can go to budget and we'll smoke, that makes me feel better on this. So I trust you know what is best and if you feel that 250 is good and we have that option.
It's a balancing act. We asked for more because we know that we have this need. We asked for more knowing there was very little chance we were going to get the full, I think it was a million, because that's what's on that balance sheet. Again, that could be eight years' worth of build-out depending on how fast things move. So we have always been able to, say it, and budget team continues to allow it, us to carry these types of funds forward, knowing that the need is there. Development timelines, one, we're not in charge of where they choose to develop those. But we also over time have checked back in with folks. If we think a project is not moving or that it's dead, we'll check back in and be like, hey, are you going to do this? And if they say no, or it's further out, we'll move it on the list or we'll remove it from the reservation list entirely based on these projects go away too. Jen Michelson is great with this, in contact with the developers, keeping our list updated, what's moving, what's not. Unit counts change, so that changes the funding amount, that type.
Okay. Yeah, I have a question. I apologize for coming in late, and I know you didn't cover this, so I'm safe.
Okay.
For affordable housing, I've talked to the city manager about this and I just want to say it out in the public because we're still kind of seeing legally if we can do this. But creating a similar incentive policy for middle market housing. So that's something that I know the mayor's project in her academy is similar to something, you know, of that sense. But I just wanted to say it in this space that is something that hopefully we can find out that we can do in some shape or form of that middle market way housing.
Absolutely. Incentive policy right now, I believe, is up to 125% AMI. It's not limited to 80 and below. However.
Just jumped all over that.
What's that?
Sterling, his hand just jumped over that.
Well, then I'll stop talking and then Sterling.
I'll be very brief. We can definitely look into that, but Sarah's going to give you a great answer right now, but we can circle back. Absolutely. Thank you.
Wow, no pressure on.
I know how to get you to respond.
Incentive policy for affordable housing, the full rewrite of it, is part of the CAP effort. The, did I say that right? The CAP, yes, the code review effort. And so as we're getting continued input from the community, as we're going to get continued input from staff and from council members, from the commissions, it's this careful balancing act of what can we incentivize? What can we hold back as an incentive that would be useful for either sustainability housing or both? And Tiffany Antall, who deserves all the kudos in the world for keeping this front of mind and everything she does with code is is always if this, then this. And so we need to think about that. And so that's in process. That's a piece of what we're working on with the idea of working with legal in order to figure out how we can, where our boundaries are with that. But the need is acknowledged and the need's been acknowledged. And I want to say policy was originally 2009. The first one was before I started. It was never utilized. But that one went up, I believe, to 100% AMI. So thank you for reminding me. That is forefront in what we're looking at as well. Not to be far moved, moving on. All right. So under the heading of create a dedicated funding source for affordable housing and Flagstaff, of course, this dedicated funding source was meant to be ongoing dedicated funding source, but we'll take what there is now because budget team and the city manager's office has made an ongoing commitment to allocating any available, not any and all, but any available one-time dollars that fit within this here. And continuation of land acquisition and unit preservation funding, this is one of those accounts we're able to roll over. You're like, what are you going to do with $250,000? Buy a piece of sidewalk? And so being able to have an allocation of that year after year does allow us to build up additional funding to do something larger. This is something we've been doing, I don't want to say for decades, but it's been for decades at this point in time. Saving and saving and then spending or having this available for local contribution for Lytec projects. Sometimes if we're looking, a developer asks to help with a local contribution towards their low-income housing tax credit application. This is some of the funding that we would access to do this. Also, we've added unit preservation to this. As we do hold right of first refusal on a number of units throughout the community, we have yet to ever exercise that because we generally don't lose those to market. They're sold to another eligible buyer. But in the case that that came up, this would give us a little bit of funding to tap into. As well as if we had a developer come in or a purchaser come in and want to buy any of the Lytec projects that are about to roll off, the rolls are coming through the qualified contract process, we have a little bit of money to help with that. Drop in the bucket, but it would show the commitment of our local government towards preserving those units in our community. Funding, you heard from Sarah earlier about this, continuation of employer-assisted housing program. And you may be thinking to yourself, everything else on this slide has zeros and this one is $75,331. Why? Well, because that's the program income that came in in the last year for our community homebuyer assistance program, which has been our revolving fund for homebuyer assistance over years. But now that we have, if we go down one line, homebuyer assistance of $7 million in bond, which will also be set up as revolving. The money coming in as people repay those down payment and closing cost assistance costs will be the ongoing funding source for employer-assisted housing. The city money, it's coming back in as loans repaid. And so every year we'll see kind of a weird number in there, which is reflective of the CHAP payoffs. When we were asking for general fund contributions towards CHAP in the past, we always included the program income number. And so it seemed to us as a way to still respect the purpose of those funds. And it also creates a separate, easier tracking mechanism for us. Any CHAP loan made prior to January 1, 2025 will be non-bond funds and any CHAP loan made after January 1, 2025 will be bond funds. So there'll be a clear date delineation to assist us with tracking those funds and funneling them into the two different purposes. And then bond programs we listed here, homebuyer assistance, $1 million, that, our SOQ is due May 6th. And so we hope to be in front of you with an award of that prior to break. Justina didn't want me to overcommit, so I added the word "hope." It depends on negotiations with whoever the successful respondent is, of course. Rental incentive bond program is fully obligated. Thank you, council, for those two awards recently. Redevelopment on city-owned land, that RFP is out to help identify a consultant to assist us in carrying a project of this size. And I'm not remembering. And I'm not remembering the due date, but it is within the coming month, I believe, the end of May. And then the adaptive reuse program. Housing Commission last month took a look at the outline of the program. We worked through some, I don't want to say sticky points, but this one could potentially have a greater level of risk we're asking for tolerance of, and Housing Commission members had some really great ideas of how we can, we literally said, what level of risk are you and what does this look like? And so, those are being saging with their feedback, and that will be coming forward with, along with the zoning code changes that Tiffany has been talking about related to adaptive reuse, I believe, in September. So, all of these programs are moving. Questions, thoughts, general applause? Councilmember Matthews?
Sarah, I had a curiosity, one of your bullet points is redevelopment of city-owned land that we've talked about. And I recall the map, which kind of surprised me within the city limits, that there's a little bit of checkerboard in there with county land in our city limits. Is there county, is there opportunities for us, I don't know what's on that county parcels, to do a purchase there, and is there federal or state land within our city limits?
I'll answer the last question first, because that's easy. Yes. There's federal and state land within our city limits. It's been a while since we've looked at land with the county. I don't know how to say this nicely.
Yeah.
Okay. And not only for us, but for other entities as well, as well, that doesn't have a designated purpose is often a dog. It's often steeply sloped, in floodplain, unbuildable for a number of reasons. We did change the evaluation process of accepting land donations probably about a decade ago, because people would donate us land, and we'd be like, yay, now we have to maintain it, and we have no idea what we're ever going to use it for. And so, we changed what that process looks like in accepting donations of land for that.
Sarah, the, the county land is included in the last cap, right?
County land is included in the last cap, so.
Federal or state included in there?
St. McNulty's nodding, so I'm going to go with it. And foreshadowing, coming attractions, September ninth, housing staff will be in front of you, going over what city-owned land we have that's designated for affordable housing, what opportunity sites were identified within the last that may be suited for residential development. We're also going to review what's already been built in city land over time, because I think people forget that we've actually been causing development in city-owned land a long time, about twenty-five years. And getting some council direction, and we're, our intent, we have an outline of it, you know, what's, what's close and ready to go? What needs some infrastructure brought to it? What is a great idea? But has some addition, we need additional time on it, that type of thing. And one of the things we're working on will be overlapping the last recommendations with city-owned land with the opportunity sites.
And just to clarify your reference.
I think she's referring to Stacy's dog.
I've seen what Stacy's dog does.
Um, is the state and federal land within limits also undevelopable, or just something we've never?
There has, we have been on the state land door several, several times. The barrier with the use of state land is that the state must sell that land for the maximum amount of funding possible to benefit education. And there have been a couple times through the years where we've been able to kind of like, I won't even say a foot in the door, and we've been kind of able to like sneak in the door with a toe, and then, no. And so, we're happy to work to revisit that conversation. I think sometimes city council advocacy or something in that direction, we'd be happy to explore those, but they're really two different pieces. We've even tried the argument of, well, benefiting education, that's great, we have teachers that need places to live, zero obstruction with that, with the state land department. Things change, people change, and we can revisit that.
And the federal land?
And the federal land is interesting. There was a, there was something in the farm bill last two sessions, I don't think it's in this one now, which would allow the use of Forest Service administrative sites to be leased for the creation of housing. That guide. And so, we had done an analysis, I say we so broadly, planning, done an analysis of what those Forest Service administrative sites are in and around the city limits of Flagstaff. Of course, they all have some type of use on them now, most of them do, or they're adjacent to a Forest Service use. And there were a couple where there was some potential there. But that, that permission sunset last fall, and has not been renewed by Congress. So, is there some potential there? Yes, of course, I'm reading the news headlines about the current administration's interest in putting housing on federal land. The areas I can see through my casual reading, I have not spent a lot of time studying this, are in areas that have zero infrastructure to them, no roads, no water, no sewer, no, no anything. And so, that would be an additional lift, rather than working towards the infill properties in and around the community. That would be closer to pull that infrastructure.
And Michelle makes note that federal land evaluated in the last was limited to administrative sites, no Forest Service lands.
Administrative Forest Service?
Sites.
Yeah. Yeah, no general Forest Service. Thank you for that clarification.
These are really good points. I'm looking forward to the city partnering with the county on combining land, so that we can get some affordable housing built to, you know, support, support our employees and people who are very absolutely necessary to our community. And I'm wondering if we've ever thought about combining open space and housing for a bond to purchase state land, where it could be combined with some open space protection and building some housing.
Specifically open space. We've talked about a couple different other pieces of what we could combine, but we could chat open space. Rebecca's nodding. I'll get when she nods. She just does it to humor me, Jennifer. So, yeah. And look at those, and we'd be happy to restart. It's been a while since we've had pre-pandemic. I want to say just before pandemic, we were talking to county about some shared opportunities, and then everything derailed. So, happy to restart those. Especially given who the city, the county manager is, and his knowledge of what our needs are too. All right. Other questions and thoughts before I move on? This is my last slide. Ow, I took thirty minutes. My apologies.
Do you need a chair?
I'm doing okay. I'm doing okay. I will go home and elevate. Oh, it's changing on the screen, but not on mine, because I didn't push the button. All right, ten-year planned investments. Educate the community, connect two point four, and Joanne mentioned this earlier, is some one-time funding towards an outreach engagement coordinator. I do have to say, we have an intern who has done a great job with what we have. We have been really excited about our partnership with the Northern Arizona Association of Realtors. And we have all kinds of people and energy, which is just awesome. So like, we should do a scavenger hunt, and we're like, that would be great. How do you see that working? And they're like, well, we'll do all of this, and then you guys can come. And we're like, no, that's great. And so, we've developed a, a new, different, stronger relationship with the leadership of that board. We're meeting with that board regularly, and I think this is an example of a space that we can flesh out with others in the community as well, of where messages are best carried and discussed. There's a need in the community to help folks understand the role housing plays as infrastructure in a thriving community. I mean, it comes up in our discussions about economic development, about recruitment and retention. It comes up throughout the organization, and not only ours, it comes up throughout businesses in the community, et cetera. And so, helping, having some dedicated piece, because we've been doing this as staff is available, which isn't always a, this is an easy one to postpone or assign to the interns. So, I'm looking forward to this more of a concentrated effort, looking at different ways that we can engage the community, and we're going to have some exciting things to be doing that with, along with the cap implementation and the land development discussion coming forward, et cetera. With that, can I just?
Please. I wanted to, on the conversation on, can everybody hear me? Am I okay sitting here?
Just talk.
Um, just on the language that Sarah just mentioned, the farm bill language on housing, on Forest Service administrative sites, that was extended.
It was extended.
It was a bill that passed at the end of the session in twenty twenty-four, and it's extended to twenty twenty-eight.
And we'll hop back on that.
This is kind of again interested in those opportunities, so.
Okay. I don't know what I read then that said it wasn't. So, okay. Excellent, thank you. We had not yet closed that loop. Thoughts, questions? Okey-dokey. Thank you again for switching the agenda around, so I had the opportunity to come answer your questions in person. You know where to find me? Yeah, well, no, you don't. I'm working. I'm not telling you where I live, but you know how to find me. Teams, or email, or my cellphone. So, please reach out if other questions come up. And while I may not be in the room much of today, I am available remotely. So, thank you so much.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Appreciate the support from the budget team and from city council, and also our other departments within the city. It is, it is a true team effort to do what we do.
Elevate. Elevate.
Elevate. I will go elevate. These are compression, so it helps somewhat.
Very stylish.
Thank you. You're going to see a lot of these.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, Michelle McNulty, interim Community Development Director. I got nervous when we broke, took a break for lunch, and then I was going to have to talk after lunch, and then I thought I was going to have to tell a story. Sarah, I always appreciate you, but now I right now, so I'm going to save you stories and bad jokes that I had prepared. So, one of our PBB items is inclusive and engaged communities. So, what are the objectives to achieving this? Proactively foster community representation and civic engagement by enhancing opportunities for public involvement in line with best practices. Advance social equity and social justice in Flagstaff by supporting social services. Facilitate and foster equity, diversity, and inclusivity, including support of trauma-informed policies and practices. Enhance the city's involvement in community education and regional partnerships to strengthen the level of public trust. Ensure city facilities, services, and programs are accessible for all residents and representative of Flagstaff's diverse community, and promoting environmental justice and the access to environmental benefits. So, some of the ways that some of the ways that our programs are achieving objectives are through a varied group of projects. At the library, we are increasing our library collection, so that we have items that our community requests, as well as looking at our program offerings, and internet accessibility for city and county patrons. This is incredibly necessary in certain county libraries, where they do not have internet in all homes, and they really strongly rely on our libraries. Sustainability, has the neighborhood sustainability grants? Make sure I didn't turn the slide accidentally. This is an impactful community grant program that receives dozens of applications annually, seeking between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars in funding. Additional funding will go toward supporting more community-driven projects in the categories of climate action, building energy, public health, resilience, transportation, food, and waste. This program is open to local businesses, community groups, schools, and individuals with project ideas within Flagstaff. And to date, over eighty projects have been funded through the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program. PROS has a goal of providing the entire community with access to parks or natural areas or open space within a ten-minute walk, which improves health and wellness, physical activity and mental health for all. And they've been a huge advocate for this through the regional planning process. And then also engaging volunteers for cultural site monitoring, protection, and invasive weed removal. Throughout the regional plan update, throughout the outreach, the development of the plan, as well as the upcoming ballot initiative, planning staff, in addition to hosting standard meetings after work hours at a set location, has also been meeting the community where they're at and when they're available, whether it be at community events and meetings and other creative ways, including providing translation services, sometimes childcare, trying to make it easier for all of our residents to participate. And to get a wide swath of our community, so that everyone has the chance to understand the plan prior to being asked to cast their ballot in twenty twenty-six. Also, support for the annual Mexican Mobile consulate event. Expanding implementation of the Connect Flagstaff platform for city engagement initiatives, and include partner organizations such as Mountain Line and Metro Plan, while as increasing the accessibility of the city's website and other digital communications. Sarah Langley has been pivotal in updating our web content, content accessibility guidelines, so that everyone can have access to our web. And we are also growing the city's presence and following on social media channels. And the police department is enhancing the use of SpiderTech, a software solution designed to help public safety agencies improve customer service and community engagement, really to help victim engagement by providing equitable access. And then finally, providing inclusive programming, including a Fourth of July drone show and regional Flagstaff powwow. Council recently approved a contract for the drone show on July fourth, instead of fireworks or a laser show. And the powwow is a new event that will be managed by Rose Tahi and Sarah Langley. This is just a sampling of all the different projects that are happening for inclusive, engaged community. There are others, but these are really the highlight, highlighted ones.
Thanks.
All right. Paul Moons, city engineer, with the twenty-third pick in the NFL Draft.
That's what?
It's supposed to go yesterday, or I mean, yesterday, tomorrow, so today, today, I'm representing the Packers for the NFL. I don't know. I don't know. Best player available, I feel like. All right. So, I get to talk to you today about sustainable and innovative infrastructure. Some of the goals here are to deliver outstanding service to residents through healthy and well-maintained infrastructure system. That can be, you know, our engineering capital projects, our building roads, our facility, our public works are maintaining them. You know, we're doing water lines, wastewater line, or wastewater lines, reclaim water lines, we have our foots trails, we have parks, facilities and buildings, so this can be a whole slew of different things that the city needs to maintain. We utilize long-range plans that identify the community's future infrastructure needs and all associated costs. So, those plans can be our regional plan, that's one of the real ones we really use a lot. In engineering, we use the active transportation master plan, there's the carbon neutrality plan. We have PROS and Water Services have their master plans that we try to do. So, a lot of planning goes on, and we try to follow those documents. Provide, manage, and maintain an effective infrastructure for multimodal and active transportation. So, again, we're maintaining the road. So again, we're maintaining the roads, the foots trails, sidewalks. We're working with with Mountain Line to provide access to bus stops for multimodal. A lot of different work going on in that area. And then facilitate, develop and encourage carbon neutrality energy opportunities. So we do have a lot of codes and ordinances that discuss carbon neutrality and sustainability. So developers can get certain certain relief on items such as parking and different things if they're if they're doing items. We encourage, you know, we have city facilities that use solar. We're, we talked about electrifying, electrifying the fleet. So as our vehicles come up for replacement, we're looking at electric first, then hybrids. Our, our traditional ICE vehicles, internal combustion engines kind of last. A lot of the big equipment, though, we can't get electric now. So yeah, yeah. Can some, but dump trucks and things like that, graders. So we're, you know, slowly converting to electrification. So that's good.
Question? I was excited to hear that Jay Lively Zamboni is electric.
Don't know if they actually have that. Yes, there was one approved. I don't know if they actually got it yet.
It is on order and we're expecting it, I believe. Oh, Amy, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm back. Yeah, Councilmember Spence, it's been on order since I believe October. But would you believe a Zamboni has about a 365-day build cycle? So we are anticipating the Zamboni hopefully next fiscal year.
Good question.
Thank you for that update. I just like to say the word electric Zamboni.
I do too.
We also support the community's social infrastructure needs and assist those partner organizations that provide services that the city does not. Next slide, please.
A little quicker straight there.
Oh. Sorry. All right.
Just have to do that. Push the other side.
Okay. At the airport, they're implementing an aircraft operations track tracking software. We're gonna improve wildlife hazard mitigation at the airport. Again, invest in electric vehicle fast charging infrastructure for the city fleet. So sustainability is working with Public Works to put a level three fast charger at Public Works for for their electric fleet. So that'll be a big help. Plan for future construction of fire and police facilities. So in the recommended budget is the expansion at the police department for some training facilities and housing some of their critical equipment. So we're gonna be working, engineering is working with the police department to get that project going. We're also gonna be working with police and fire to talk about the the future facilities out at the Shark Bite, which could be fire station, wildland fire station, fire administration, and then a future police substation. So we'll be talking to police and getting a request for qualifications sent out so we can get a, get somebody hired to help us plan those, plan those facilities. Again, maintain city facilities to deliver service. So we have the Jay Lively has the chillers. NACET building improvements, airport infrastructure, and then there's ongoing fire station maintenance. All right, here we go. Oh, no. Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, please move.
He's an engineer. Sorry, Paul. That's where I'm at. That's my last slide. Thank you. Again, we talked about those long-range plans, so active transportation master plan. We include bike and pedestrian infrastructure in our major projects. So when you see like the Lone Tree overpass, Lone Tree corridor, Butler Forest Street, Butler Complete Streets. You'll see items like on the screen where we're gonna have elevated, separated pedestrian lanes to get those off the streets. It's safer for for walkers and bicyclists. We provide dark sky compliant lighting fixtures to the streetlight luminary replacement program. So that's an ongoing program between engineering and public works that we're replacing streetlights with dark cloud, dark sky compliant fixtures. Ada also recently did a pilot that they're they control the streetlights on the intersections, on the traffic signals on their, on their roadways. So they're gonna be looking at replacing those luminaires as well with the sky compliant lights. And then again, replace and maintain approximately eight miles of the asphalt foot system. We talked a little bit about this in the Capitol Project Retreats. Council will be seeing a tract in the next few council meetings to start work on that replacement of eight miles of asphalt foot trail. So that'll really help bring those up to speed. There's a lot of large cracks in some of them right now. So get people hopefully using those again to get to their destinations, to schools, to the parks.
I think I asked this once before. They call them zippers in the asphalt trails. Are we replacing those trails with new asphalt or concrete?
New asphalt. So we're looking at a mixed design to help.
Better.
Something better. We did look at concrete. It would be almost four times as much. So if you're looking at about a $3 million project to replace all this with that's what you were, we were looking at our 12, I think a 12 or $13 million project. And then we are also putting in the five, in every five years in our capital improvement plan, we're putting money in to go out and maintain them. You know, if there's little things here and there, PROS will fix that. But every five years, we'll have a program that will come out and you know, fix all the cracks and then we'll put a sealant over it. That'll help keep them.
Part of the first eight miles is that that include Lone Tree.
Yes.
We focus on bike and ped safety. You know, I'm so glad to hear that we're actually taking care of what we already have in place and making it better because every time I go down Lone Tree, cyclists are on the road.
Correct. I drive that.
On the path. This is so dangerous. And so it's always into mind. It's like in before we build more, we need to.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. And the new ones that we're building with developers or city projects are typically gonna be the concrete. A question? You?
Right, Stacy? I click right.
And I don't know, I don't know my left from right.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Heidi Hansen, E. C. H. P. Talia. I get to speak to you about your priority of robust, robust and resilient economy. Just to remind you what we do to achieve that, the objectives are to support and strengthen a robust, diverse and sustainable economy. We maintain and enhance an equitable and effective business retention expansion program. We enhance relationships between the development community, the city and the Flagstaff residents. We attract employers that provide high-quality, low-impact on our infrastructure and our natural resources. We enhance the community's workforce, housing and development programs. We improve partnerships with the private and public sectors. And last but not least, we embrace and invest in responsible tourism opportunities to promote economic development. So some of the ways that we're gonna do it, and I just want to throw out. I only have one slide. You'll notice that everyone had a ton and that's because I could have filled like five slides for you. And I thought everyone else is gonna start adding a bunch of stuff and they were so busy filling the other ones out. So I'm gonna say a few other things that you're not gonna see on this slide. So one of the things that we're doing this coming fiscal is we're going to we've talked to you at a different meeting about the Route 66 Centennial. And the reason why it's a big deal is because 14% of our visitation comes internationally. International visitors want to do something like ride the Mother Road. So it is important for us to capture that 14% as robustly as we can. So that's why we care about a Route 66 Centennial. On top of that, America's 250th birthday is something that's going to be exciting for everybody, a domestic traveler as well as a international traveler. So we have to celebrate something like that. We'd be remiss in not doing so. So we have to plan ahead. So for instance, on Route 66, we've been working on this for two years already to make sure that when someone rides the Mother Road, we have 14.1 miles that they want to make sure they do it in Flagstaff. Also with beautification, a lot of people don't realize that the beautification BBB fund goes to things like the flower program, the planters, the murals, all the other things that you see. Some of this is things that we create with our commission BPAC. And some of this is through a beautification and action grant that somebody in the community could apply for. And they say, I want to enhance the side of my building or I want to plant a garden that the community can enjoy. So these are really important programs so that when someone comes into Flagstaff, they want to visit time and time again. You want your visit to be pleasant. You want it to be clean. But also if you're a business partner that wants to consider bringing your business here, you want to make sure it's somewhere that you want to stay for a lifetime. So these things are very important in building this economy. Third is attract and support a second airline. I can tell you the efforts are have been so extensive this last year and a half with Brian Gall and Sarah Harper. They have been working so hard at securing second service. We were told by United Airlines recently in a meeting that if we get the small community air service grant, which gives $800,000 to bring in an airline aboard, that they would be very much looking to bring Denver back. So after that, we'll continue to work on other routes, something like a connection to California, maybe a San Jose. LAX is very hard to get into. We have had that LAX route. It only is on a Saturday. It's not conducive to a lot of what we do because we need a return trip, right? And so your return trip takes you through Phoenix back to Flagstaff. So again, we're trying to make sure that it's a one-way. Also, with community investment, with the economic development program, we have incentive programs. And that is to do business attraction, expansion and retention. So if you're a business that's in town and you want to do something like grow a section of your business, you need new computers, you actually need to build a wall in your business, you can apply for these programs at different times of the year to help you do that. We also work with, in conjunction with Nicole's group and sustainability to do a green business bootcamp. And thank you, Vice Mayor. I know that you were there and I think Councilmember Spence, you were there. If I left anybody out, I apologize. We just had it. You could go, I believe, at moonshot. And it is a way for us to bridge economic development and climate action. And the people that are doing that the best in our community can go and actually compete and they win money for doing so. And then another thing that sustainability is working on is our planned workshops to educate on building code changes. And so these are to support the transition to a new suite of building codes and to reduce overall costs to the community. Having a smooth transition to the next building code update is critical to meeting the CNP goals associated with building energy. These workshops will also help break down assumptions that energy efficiency and all-electric building features are difficult to implement or that they might raise housing costs. And if you have any more questions on that, I will definitely bring Nicole up here. She is the expert. And then last but not least, I just wanted to throw out the BBB is going to have about $12.8 million in it. And we plan to spend every bit of it in this community, reinvesting it back into all the things that our businesses and our community deserve. So this was just a really short list, but I want to let you know there's millions of dollars going toward creating this robust and resilient economy and helping our businesses thrive, not just with the local spend, but a visitor spend. Any questions?
I just, I have a comment. I spoke to Kimber Lanning from local first yesterday and she just gushed about staff and how great you all are to work with.
Thank you. I will definitely pass that on if they're not already listening. Good relationship. Any other questions? All right, you're in good hands. I will turn it over.
Ready?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Incredibly humbled and honored to be your Police Chief. I'm Sean Conley. So I'm here to talk to you. Well, before I get going, CJ, I love the lighthouse analogy. I prefer a bat signal analogy. But we'll compromise in the middle with a lighthouse. I think it's really cool on some things, but really good stuff. I'm here to talk to you about the key priority of a livable community. What a wonderful concept. And I just want to say too, how impressed I have been since my time arriving here with the intimacy and the engagement with which this budget process moves through its cycle. So kudos to everybody here. Echoing the comments of the Fire Chief, the men and women of the Flagstaff Police Department are incredibly grateful as we strive to provide elite service through the pay plan and a very strategic phased approach as stewards of the taxpayer. And enhancing our technology and our ability to be meaningful in the community. So thank you. So a little bit of the objectives related to a livable community. We talk about creating a welcoming community through partnerships, resilient neighborhoods and civic engagement. And I think when you look at those three things, how important they are. Just listening today to the role of relationships and collaboration. How nothing great gets done in city governance without these types of partnerships and collaboration. We talk about building resiliency in our community and almost a form of self-sufficiency in a lot of the things we provide and how impactful that can be for all of us. And you're continuing to see it through everybody's presentations today. And then obviously civic engagement. As I look around the room, I have literally seen, I think, everybody out in the community here engaging and doing things. And then the reciprocalness of how the community engages with us. So wonderful. You talk about providing amenities and activities to support a healthy lifestyle. We know that when our communities are healthy and supported, from a public safety perspective, they're safer. In addition to that, they're healthier related to their nutrition, their education, their lifestyles. And so it's really important, and you'll hear this today, as we provide amenities and activities as a city to ensure this healthy lifestyle. The regionals of Northern Arizona is incredible. The things that go on through regional partnerships that provide equitable and inclusive education and cultural opportunities, especially the historical cultural focus we must all have here in this community is impeccable related to the residents of all ages and all backgrounds. Actively supporting attainable and affordable housing. They talk about, if you're gonna be a great cop, you gotta have great backups. And so having Rebecca here on then helped me with this. And I know Sarah's helped with this so much and you've heard so much of this. And then Heidi Hansen's here too. I think it's, I'm glad you went before. Stop. So just so you know, my peers volunteered me for this presentation. So it's wonderful. But we know the importance of attaining affordable housing in this community and this 10-year housing plan. And the projects and opportunities associated with it are still being supported and will continue to be supported. Supporting diverse employment opportunities and high-quality jobs. I think you heard Sarah today earlier talk about where we are with the metrics within our hiring opportunities and how many diverse options there are within the service within the city of Flagstaff. So incredible. And then achieve a well-maintained community through comprehensive equitable code compliance and development. So when we start looking a little more granularly into a livable community, we you heard Heidi in Economic Development Division talk so much about increasing the grants offered to our local nonprofits. I think she said $12.8 million. Is that what you said you have in that bucket? Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, wonderful. And so, you know, we currently have through our lead arts agency, Creative Flagstaff, 50 grants to nonprofits in the arts and science sector. We will be increasing the contributions from the BB and B tax so that more nonprofits can be awarded. And I can't think of a more important time to continue to support nonprofits with everything that's going on in our country. So that's incredible. Improve cultural site preservation and trail maintenance at Picture. Improve cultural site preservation and trail maintenance at Picture Canyon and the completion of the Arizona Recreational Trails Program Grant. In conversations with Rebecca and PROS, it sounds like that's down to the final home stretch with that project. There's just some more volunteer work to get done and that completion of an incredible restoration project at Picture Canyon will be happening. Additionally, increase recreational opportunities for children and families with day camps, sport camps and increased aquaplex hours to include Sundays. PROS is evaluating a return to Sunday hours at the aquaplex. I just want to say when PROS and these entities in our communities that are providing this type of enrichment and engagement for especially youth in our communities makes my job a lot easier. There is incredible symmetry that goes on between these types of programs in our communities and the ability to engage and create purpose and meaning in our youth and our young adults that help us increase our public safety. So kudos to everything that's going on at the aquaplex with the day camps. In our last slide here, we talk about housing. You know, as we move forward, and you heard the City Manager, I think, this morning talk about the incorporation from the Town of Williams of the Housing Choice Voucher Program from them into our operations. I think increasing, I know increasing the City of Flagstaff vouchers by fifty percent, by fifty is going to be an incredible endeavor. I think all we have to do now, and it's been submitted, Sarah, right? Is get the approval from HUD is my understanding on that as we move forward. So it's in their hands. All necessary documents have been submitted.
It's actually been transmitted from the Phoenix office to the Regional Field Office already.
Wonderful. Additionally, administer with available funding, the incentive policy for affordable housing, Employee Assisted Housing Program and the land acquisitions that I think were just part of some rich conversations and dwelling unit preservations to create and preserve housing units. In this year's budget process, funding was allocated for all three of these things that I just mentioned and there will be continuing efforts. Explore development and uses for city-owned land designated for affordable housing. I think this is incredibly important. I think there's no more important time to get creative with the types of things we have to do to ensure we have these types of affordable housing opportunities. I think you heard Sarah talk about an upcoming work session item that's been scheduled for September ninth for council to discuss potential uses and development of city-owned land on this matter. Additionally, launch bond-funded homebuyer assistance programs within CHAP, Community Housing Assistance Program is the acronym, after award through a request for statement of qualifications to an administering agency. Community education outreach will continue with the purpose of helping community understand the vital role housing plays. I think that upstream education, especially related to bonds or any kind of additional funding streams we try to create is really vital so that they understand the why and the importance of that moving forward. And then I think last but not least, I just want to say how grateful we are for the work of everybody in this room. It's such a team effort on a daily basis in the city of Flagstaff. And with that, is there any questions for me?
Question?
Yes, Mayor.
Does the Police Department have any Department of Justice grants?
Yes.
Are any of them being cut?
We, so it's really an interesting conversation. As you heard, I think, the City Manager talk and some other things related to sustainability. We have not been informed of that. We have not been informed of it. So fingers crossed. Yeah, because there are some vital things that we will always need to continue to support us in moving forward on those things. So I have not heard of any of that. Okay, yeah. But that does not mean.
I know.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Paul McCallister, Sustainability Director. I'm just going to say Paul Moot started this fight. How many Packer fans does it take to change a lightbulb? Zero. They are happy living in Chicago's shadow. All right, well, I'm here to talk about the environmental stewardship priority. And the objective here is to speak to tremendous elements of a healthy community. The focus is on promoting, protecting and enhancing a healthy and sustainable environment and its natural resources. We also focus on engaging with our community members through education and volunteer opportunities as well as implementing and enhancing sustainable building practices, waste diversion programs, alternative energy programs and multimodal transportation options. We focus on encouraging the private sector's investment in environmental stewardship. And we touched on that a little bit when we were talking about the market transition with electric vehicles as an example. The objective is also focus on furthering the carbon neutrality plan as well as strengthening Flagstaff's resilience or preparedness to climate change impacts on the built, natural, economic, health and social systems. So with that, I'd like to just share some of the alignment on this year's proposed budget. The Flagstaff Local My Actions Matter Initiative is, this campaign is a way to offer our community members that they can volunteer, mentor, donate, vote, support education or even shop in Flagstaff and be eco-friendly. This is initiated through Discover Flagstaff and wonderful efforts that they are doing in this realm. I want to take a moment here and pause if you all don't mind because Heidi Hansen alluded to a lot of the collaboration that we have with sustainability and economic vitality. But I want to talk a moment about one of the new positions in sustainability, and that is the Community Services Coordinator. If approved, thirty thousand dollars of this position's funding will come from Discover Flagstaff. And the focus of this position is to lead more efforts throughout the community to remove litter, to help support efforts like neighborhood cleanups as well as removing debris from our stream channels. And so we felt that this was a perfect opportunity to highlight that collaboration. We know that our visitors want to see a clean community and we know that our community wants to see a clean community. So I just wanted to hit pause there for a moment and thank Heidi for her creative thinking and also support of our work in neighborhood engagement and volunteer services. Now going back to the slide. This year, we also plan to expand our residential food drop-off composting program. We have several locations throughout the community. Shout out to PROS for being a host of a few of those. And I just want to offer an example. This is not a sophisticated drop-off program. We literally use five-gallon buckets. But we are seeing on the upper end of fifty thousand pounds of food scraps that are being dropped off by community members, many of which who live in multifamily housing units and don't have access to composting on their own. These then go to local businesses that turn the compost into a product and then are distributed out through the community. So the small investment in this actually has a really good long-term impact in our community and it is helping employ people. In addition, in environmental stewardship, we're seeing the promotion of Flagstaff's parks, recreation amenities, open spaces, as well as events that are available and welcome to all to explore our healthy environments and natural resources. And then additionally, we are expanding our community garden resources, investing more in the infrastructure. We're seeing full use of our gardens that are available. All applications are in and we are at capacity in our community gardens. So we want to make sure that we're supporting this infrastructure and providing the tools that our community needs to continue growing their own food. And then we are expanding our Urban Farm Initiative just outside the door. At McAllister Ranch, we are going to be introducing a new community garden and we want to thank our community members who really brought this vision forward. We were glad to be of assistance to help. I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
Part of that was, the council may recall that we just updated some of the zoning code to reflect community gardens and community incubators. So the long-term vision for the garden out here is that's going to be the first phase. And then the second phase will actually be an incubator for urban farming, so business development. And we will be happy to come back to council and share when we actually have the diagram. We are in contract negotiations right now and we'll be announcing the local nonprofit that is going to be taken. All right, and then just for our last slide, on environmental stewardship, we will be supporting wildfire mitigation and watershed protection through grant opportunities. And we will also be supporting our, excuse me, our efforts for a sustainable procurement policy and sustainable procurement code. I know there's been a lot of discussion about this. Staff have been working really hard to bring this forward and we look forward to having the discussion with the council in the coming year. And then finally, and this has been, I know, a touch point with many in the community, but about the electric vehicle conversion. One thing that has been a challenge for our organization is how quickly we can procure electric vehicles. And so the procurement team is working on soliciting on-call contracts for procuring those electric vehicles. So when we do know that they're available, we can actually procure them faster. Well, that is all I have. Are there any questions on the environmental stewardship?
Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned that the community gardens are all signed up at full capacity. Is there any plan to look around the community and see what other acreages might be available for additional gardens?
Absolutely, and that was one of the first steps is McAllister Ranch was this opportunity for us to expand. Years ago, we did do analysis and analysis of all city property and the potential for additional community gardens. So McAllister Ranch is a good example of that. We also have an opportunity to maximize some more garden beds within our existing gardens. We know that we will have disruptions to our Bonito Garden project. So we are actually working on preparing for that. And then of course, working with PROS, the visioning for the Complex Incorporated Community Gardens. And we fully intend to be supportive of that direction. There's funding to move that forward. But thank you. It's always a constant. And then we collaborate a fair amount with housing. So we have been, housing has been fantastic in allowing us to set up gardens on property that hasn't yet been developed. But now, for example, Isabel is a perfect example of recognizing a longstanding garden and how to incorporate that into the new affordable housing units that are being built. And the team in housing, as well as the developers, have been really responsive in protecting those gardens as they're established. So we're working hard to merge the two because it's frankly a no-brainer.
It's the use that makes sense. They're complementary to each other. They make complete sense to share residential and garden space when appropriate, especially when a developer needs to meet a common space goal anyway. And so suggesting a community garden in partnership with sustainability fulfill that purpose really is working.
Would you?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I was waiting for it. I was waiting for you to jump up on that one. Sorry, Paul.
Hey, Vice Mayor, Council. So you saw a great presentation from Team Flagstaff about how our resources are advancing our objectives and priorities for our community. And I think it really shows that we're trying to hit those targets of what was adopted, how we built these priorities and objectives over the last several years. And now's our opportunity to think about, do we want to step back and take a look at these priorities objectives and have another conversation to change or amend or look at where we stand as an organization and a city? So this is a little recap of how we got here. We started the BBB program in 2019. Our first objective was to create these priorities and objectives for our community. And in 2019, we took the first approach working with city council. Ansley, you were there, right? Been around for a while. And worked in a roundtable session with council and staff to really think about what are the things we want to see advance in our community and what are important for us as visions for our community. So that was how we kicked off this conversation with priority-based budgeting and building these priorities. The following summer, we went out to the community. We wanted to validate and have a conversation about, council had a discussion on and adopted the prior fall. Twenty twenty, you know what year that was? It was COVID. So it was a little hard to get out in the community too much, but we did do our best. We created videos, we did some social media posts and tried to explain what priority-based budget is to our community. Some great videos we put together that are still out there online and other communities have been using ours to show what it means. But we did as much outreach as we can. We did some surveys online. We had paper surveys available for people at some facilities. It moved the needle a little bit. It did make some minor changes. So we did adopt a new set of objectives and priorities at that point. The priorities themselves have stayed very standard over the several years. Those are kind of the pillars that really stand over the test of time is the objectives that we've been kind of managing these last several years. Twenty twenty-three, this is where we took a much larger effort with both a council and community year to look at our objectives and priorities for the city of Flagstaff. So in 2023, we took the approach of meeting with council. We had a retreat and a discussion about what is a hot topic for you as council and how do those fit within our objectives we have today? Is there areas we need to maybe massage the objectives and better define and move forward? We met with you first and then we took that communication you gave to us and built an opportunity to go out to the community. The community outreach was extensive, I think, on our part. The PBB administration team went to several events. We went to over seven local events that occurred in the community. We did, we got an online survey that got seventy-seven submissions on it. Three open houses held at City Hall, Aquaplex and Murdoch Center. You know, trying to get out there and get that connection and talk to the community. So I think it was a great opportunity and we did bring those edits and changes back to council. And you guys adopted that back in the fall of 2023. We've been using that set of priorities objectives for the current fiscal year we're in as well as building this year's budget in alignment to what the requests are. We've had this in place for two years. And so our thought is that every two years, you know, as new council members may be seated, we may want to look at refreshing these things and having this conversation. That's why we're here in front of you today. You've seen the chart already today. John explained it very well when he presented it, kick off that session. These withstand the test of time as far as priorities. And the objectives is what we've been focusing on the last several years. So I'm not going to read all those off. Team Flagstaff actually did a good job presenting those just recently. So continuing to look at your objectives is a really important step. You don't want to get too stagnant in what you're looking at. You want to refresh that frequently. How frequently is kind of up to council and community of what we want to do for processes. There could be new changes to our organization that we're focusing or moving directions in a different way that we want to incorporate into our objectives. There could be evolving changes in our community, things we want to address or bring to the forefront and build our budgets aligned with those community priorities in future years. So there's good reasons to have this periodic check-in. So, there's good reasons to have this periodic check-in with council and the community. So, the question comes to how do we approach moving forward? And I really have to thank Chris Rody for these slides because he did these a couple of years ago, and they stood the test of time. Copy and paste, I always love using other people's work, and his work was. So, thank you to Chris for helping us with this conversation. So, there's the ways you approach it. You could take the approach of just amending the existing objectives and priorities, or you can start from scratch and say, okay, let's start from new and build a whole new set of priorities. There's advantages and disadvantages to both, but we want to put that out there for council. By just amending the current priorities objectives, it's a much quicker process and less time-intensive for staff to develop and bring through and back to council. It builds off the great work that pre-discouncils done and staff to develop and bring forward objectives and targeted budget proposals based on existing organizational knowledge that we have in our staff, our council, and so forth. And it just allows us to refine and look at those targets and those definitions, make sure we're there. Starting from scratch is a rather large undertaking. Taking the slate clean, say what are our key priorities through our organization will take a lot more time, council's and staff's time. But it does allow for reimagining of those priorities that we have in our community. Is it the same priorities as we had in 2019, several years ago? It allows for unrestricted dialogue. You're not going to just be talking about, okay, this priority, I want to talk about this. But it gives you more of an open book concept of, oh, let's talk and bring everything forward and have that conversation. And it could produce larger changes, a big shift in what we're talking about with priorities and objectives. So, those are approaches we can take. And then, there's a matter of processes. How do we go through these processes, one or the other, going forward? We call these community council or council to community. Where do we start the process with these two ideas? Going out to community first with the existing objectives or a blank slate, depending on which way you choose, allows them a more unrestricted approach and view and allows them to just put their thoughts on paper. It gives them a little more ownership to what we're doing as far as they sit in our objectives. And then, council comes back and looks at it, amends it, and fine-tunes what those objectives are. Going council to community gives you the opportunity, you know what the hot topics are, you know what's been evolving in our community, and gives you a chance to look at either the existing objectives and talk about those key areas that you see more focus needed or definition to define those, give you the first opportunity. Then, we kind of massage that and bring that out to the community and get the public input based on that. And it would also allow them to make changes of what you're thinking and us to have a conversation with you in the fall about, okay, here's where we landed, here's what the public's talking about, and bring that forward. So, there's a couple of different approaches that we could take with this update. Outreach will definitely be a big focus of ours. We haven't developed an outreach plan. We want to get your check-in first before we actually start developing in that. Last time, the PBB admin team did a lot of thought about where do you outreach, how do you outreach, what do you use as far as social media and surveys and so forth? It takes a lot of effort, and we're ready to go if that's the direction we go. So, we'll be developing that after we get to your direction. And I know I still have like another hour before we have to close today, but I will wrap it up pretty soon. So, here's where we're looking for your thoughts, what you seek as far as direction from the PBB admin team and the organization as we move into next fiscal year budget. See, we're always talking budget. We're going to the next fiscal year budget process and how those priorities and objectives look. Here's a little matrix that Chris put together, talking about level of effort that you have. So, you know, depending on how you stage this is a level of effort conversation also. So, what it comes down to, you know, amending existing is a little lower or moderate effort, starting with council to community makes it a little bit different as to as far as level of effort versus the big change. That is the bigger level of effort. And how you approach that with the community versus through council could add a level of energy and effort to do those. So, with that, I really, you'll start with a couple of questions for you as council. First off, you know, we do have some very strong objectives as it stands today. Staff has demonstrated how we are advancing those objectives through our budget and our considerations as we move forward. So, the first question is, are you, as council, wanting to update and review objectives and priorities for this fiscal year? Is that something you want us to engage with you and have a retreat probably in the next couple of months and kick that process off? So, let's start with that. Because if you say no, we're done.
Please.
Well, short of saying no, I find myself in the green category, and this is just knee-jerk reaction, listening to you and thinking about things. I feel like, first of all, I always want our priorities to be true reflection of the community. And so, the instinct to want to go back to this and look at it with certain regularity is absolutely spot-on. But yeah, I mean, you think Chris's matrix there, I'm definitely moderate change, low effort at this point. I realize our new council members might have a different perspective than that, wanting a bigger chance to weigh in and shake things as they get going. But it feels like doing some, you know, moving towards the orange end of the grid every two years seems a bit superfluous to me, the high effort. I guess that's where I'll start, I think.
Councilmember Spence.
Couple of retreats ago, we had a very good presentation from the, one of the originators, maybe the author of Priority-Based Budgeting, the woman from Colorado came to tell us about it. And I recall her telling us that there were about 200 communities around our country out of, you know, thousands, thousands of communities, only 200 have, including Flagstaff, have adopted priority-based budgeting. Have any of these other communities gone through this question that you're posing for us?
Yes, yes. It was when we were starting to develop with Resource X at the time, now with PAC, they did train us and talk to us about, don't let things get stale, keep those updated. And it is stuff that other communities do take that opportunity to refresh. We have a different opinion about how often, would it be four years, two years, what have you? We chose that kind of, as council changes, we want to do a check-in. Whether there's adjustments, that's up to council. But yes, other communities definitely revolve with this and look at.
And is there any feedback of any communities started from scratch?
And? I'm not aware of another community starting from scratch. I'd say I don't know that.
You're fantastic. Councilmember House, and then, city manager Greg Clifton, and then, council member Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation so far on this. I also lean towards the moderate change, low effort route, whatever that entails. I actually feel, though, that those two colors, sorry, under the amend existing might need to be swapped. It feels like what we risk the, what we have the lowest risk with as far as engaging our community is to not make assumptions of where they would stand on this process and to go to them first, rather than us making amendments and then getting the community's feedback. And I say that because of not only how engaged our community is, and I mean that as a compliment, not a critique, but just knowing that in the past, we've had those conversations where we may have individually heard from some community members about topics of interest or importance to them, brought it forward, and then from the broader community heard that it either wasn't a topic of interest, didn't seem to be a priority, or that the overall conversation may have been misunderstood or misrepresented from where we were coming from it or coming to it from. So, I would probably lean more towards taking that community to council approach and having them be able to weigh in, tell us if this is a necessary process, and if so, what their amendments would be, and then us taking that direct feedback from the community and moving that forward.
Greg.
Thank you. We end with a couple of thoughts here. I'm kind of glad to be hearing some of the comments thus far, at least, and toward a moderate change with low effort. It seems to me a little bit problematic that we might have a start-from-scratch approach when we're talking about priority-based budgeting. I think there's more than just a safe assumption here that community priorities never really stop and restart. There's no, you know, wholesale change. It is a refinement by its very nature. It occurs over time, it evolves over time. And I think, and it's already been stated, the importance here is to have some regularity checking in with the community to make sure we're in lockstep with the community. But again, I think it's a safe assumption that we're not going to have a start-from-scratch approach. The reason I think is problematic is we're already five or six years into this with our budget process, and the idea of starting from scratch in this budget process is problematic. It would turn a lot of things potentially on their head if we were to all of a sudden create new priorities. I guess at that point, we're assuming that the last five or six years are done and we're starting fresh. Well, it's never worked that way. We as much look behind as we do look forward. It's looking in the rearview and driving down the road is a continuum, it's a path. And we've seen it depicted as a path, priority-based budgeting in many of the graphics, and I think it's a really accurate graphic that shows the meandering road through, you know, and we're on that journey. It's very much that way rather than a stop and start way. So, that's just a comment. To councilmember House's comment of just now, I want to be respectful of that, I guess, and I'm not attempting to counter what she just said, I just want to throw another perspective on the table. Council is elected as representative of the community. You know more than anybody, you know, of what the community is prioritizing, and you heard, I'm sure, a good deal of that when you were running for office. You have your finger on the pulse, and I think it is a safe assumption that for council to start with this process and refer it to the community is one where, you know, arguably many in the community might expect that to be the case because you represent them and they elected you. So, I don't, I worry a little bit about sending it to the community first. I think there are times where it makes a lot of sense for the community to weigh in. You're having that occur in large volumes right now with the regional plan update. But on this one, and I'll stop here. This is your, I don't know how many days you've retreated thus far in this budget process, but I know it's been several. You are close to this. You're closer to it than most, and you're certainly closer to it than the community. So, it just seems appropriate that you would be advancing some priorities as amended to the community rather than vice versa. I'll stop there. Thanks.
Reverend Matthews.
To kind of add to that, the thought of starting from scratch and mean that we missed the mark completely in the beginning, in my mind, to start all over again, although keeping our finger on the pulse of the priorities of the community because they do have some changes throughout, but nothing usually drastic over a short amount of time. So, I'm lining up with my fellow colleagues about the moderate change with low effort. And to the city manager's comments, thank you for bringing that up. We are the elected officials, and we are just like from way up here at our federal level to the local, we are a republic. And, you know, hopefully, we are representing the people who voted this in because we're listening to them and we're their voice for the collective. And I think we do a really good job of up our priority-based budgeting process and what our priorities are. I would be shocked if something happened, we found out that the community had not been supporting this, you know, or this direction for a long time. So, I think we're going, we're on the right path with maybe some adjustments as we go further, but to put a lot of effort into it. We just did this, it sounds like. We just did this exercise like a year ago, you know, where we, everybody went through and put our little priorities on the board and stuff. So, I don't think a lot of effort needs to be put on it. I think that it's always good to be open and transparent to our community in listening. But I think that every single one of us, at least through my lens, is very accessible to our community member here and know if we were going in a wrong direction. So, I'm voting moderate, low effort changes, and I agree with the city manager that council to community for any adjustments that we might see need to be made.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you. Just an observation, a thought. Sounds like we're coming to a little bit of a consensus here, which is great. I think, and I'm speaking from a local perspective because this is a local conversation. I think this question would be much more relevant if the previous election was a change election. Very decidedly, I would characterize our local council election previously as not a change election. So, maybe that could be a leading indicator for city management on, you know, where we dial in on how severely we need to take a closer look. Couple it with election results, you know, and it's just a general sort of gut-level instinct, you know, assessment that you do. But maybe this is necessary more frequently if we're getting indicators from the community that there's, you know, that the ship isn't steering the right direction. Maybe it's this kind of inner dialogue with ourselves around how much this is necessary is much less, happen less frequently when we have those other outward indicators on the landscape.
Sure.
Thank you. I also, you know, believe, I do feel like we just did this. It's crazy. And I think the moderate change, low effort is where I'm at. And council to community, I think, city manager brought up some good points with that. I could go either way on that, but I do, it makes sense. I think we have a good pulse on what's the concern of the community and what the priorities are. So, yeah, thank you for bringing this forward.
If I remember correctly, when we did this, Chris did take it out to the public, and...
The admin team with Chris.
Okay, okay.
Chris was a great help.
Chris, single-handedly did all of... Chris single-handedly did all of. Fiscal outreach. So, I mean, everything that everyone has said, combined with the fact that we did receive, and there was, the changes were so slight, it was mostly wording and that I think we're. So, I guess that puts, that puts me in the moderate change, low effort, but I would even go, I'd put another box in there that says, we don't need to do it every other year or every two years.
I offer a quick comment to that.
No. Yes, please.
The strategy behind, and I'm, by the way, this is a council. I'm just offering some insight and maybe nudging a little bit along the way. But the strategy behind every other year has been every other year between election years. In part because it is a bit of an undertaking. Rick is probably giving enough emphasis to the process that occurred. But it's, it's pretty labor-intensive and it did span, it occurred last time and then in the previous time before, the entire summer. It's a process and the idea has been every other year between election years forward. It's just a workload thing, you know, we, it would be a lot on Stacy's office and Rick's team as well to do this at the same time as conducting an election. And also, I think to keep it apart from the election process to, just to keep things simple. So, that's the strategy, Mayor.
Yes, please.
And, and I agree with everything that everyone has set up till now completely. But I, I like it coming in front of the public, even if it was just like, maybe a work session every other time, then really digging deep every four years in between that, like a work session, just to bring it out in front of the council, new council members so they kind of understand why we're there. I'm looking forward to the process, but I don't think it needs to be as extensive as past processes have been. So, I wanted to offer that up. If we wanted to really dig deep into it every four years or whatever the number is and then have a more abbreviated work session on it in between that.
I like that because I always like to talk about things in meetings where the public can refer back to them. And, and that is, it's a, it's a great way for returning council members to get a refresher and new council members to be able to dig into it. So, I can totally support that.
I'd offer a comment.
Oh, yes, please.
I, I too favor for today's decision, moderate change, low effort. But I would like to add that I think going forward, if we could learn from any of the other communities that have been using priority-based budgeting to find out what they've done in this regard to going back to the community and checking in on the priorities for the community. And next time we discuss this, it would be helpful to know what's gone on in other communities. But for, for today, I certainly, moderate change, low effort.
You have it.
Thank you much. I think we got direction, we still got 35 minutes if you really want to talk more.
Tell a story?
No, I do not want to.
Can you dance?
Thank you very much, I think we're at public participation, don't see my spreadsheet code.
Okay.
Yes, I could talk spreadsheet for a while.
Check online, otherwise I have no. Um, all right, so, thank you, Rick. Yes, thank you, Rick.
Mayor.
Yes, please.
35 minutes?
Yes, please.
Greg, remedy.
The soul of wit.
Right here.
No public comment. Thank you, Mayor, Council and staff for all of today. We did get through it pretty expeditiously, I'm not going to wrap up all the outcomes. We might attempt to do that tomorrow. A reminder tomorrow will be even more abbreviated, we'll have you out of here by time. But we are serving you lunch and tomorrow's menu would be.
Pizza.
Pizza, pizza Friday. I wanted to offer something that just came to mind real fast as we're talking about priority-based budgeting. And it goes to your question, Dr. Spence, about what other communities have done. And I think you were fairly accurate. It was Julie Novak who presented to us and she's from Colorado and I worked with her in various capacities back then. I came upon an article from, I think it was from ICMA, yes, it was, the International City Managers Association. And I saved it for some reason and it was in my office and I unearthed it recently and it's like, why did I save this? Because it was 10 years old. And 10 years ago, in that article, the author, whose name I forget, was approaching the topic of this thing called priority-based budgeting and giving it a lot of attention and promoting it as a very effective tool that was kind of on the cutting edge. I say that, I, I share that with you and I have that article and I might, I might scan it and send it to you. You might find it interesting because 10 years ago, this was an idea that was being advanced. I mentioned it just to illustrate, and I think you heard this back in the January retreat with Ms. Novak. Flagstaff may, I don't think we're on the cutting edge of this, but I think we're on the forefront for sure. And I don't know, I think it's very beneficial to see what other communities that, that do priority-based budgeting, where are they on their, in their journeys? But at this point too, I might, I don't think it would be an overreach to suggest we're probably leading that, that journey as well. And I think the discussions like the one you just had, council, are very important because you're frankly forging process on something that is relatively new. So, good for you for, for doing that and giving it the careful thought that you have. We will check on your question to see what other communities are doing. My guess is there's a number of communities out there right now that are saying, what's Flagstaff doing? That's probably where we are with this process. And it feels good, doesn't it, to be a little bit out in the front? So, with that, Mayor and council, unless you have any questions, again, thanks to you for your continued engagement. It was a very engaging day and thank you to all of staff, especially the many, many people who presented today. But any questions of me before I turn it back to the mayor to adjourn?
Can we leave our.
Drop the questions?
I'm sorry?
Leave our computers here.
Can we leave computers here? Scott, did you get over the theft problem in this room? It was a joke. Right, the food, the food is probably already gone. No, I think you're safe here, we'll, we'll button it up safely, Scott. That'll make it nice and easy. Mayor, back to you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, staff, everything for the snacks, lunch, for the great presentations and discussions. Thank you, council, for doing your due diligence and adjourned.
Thanks, all.